Well, before we started with our work session, we have the honor of introducing you all to-
I've met him already, but Dr. Of course, he does. So, we're going to have a swearing in and then we will begin our meeting. So, Dr. Ralston, and we have Judge Gerald Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Dr. Ralston, are you prepared to take your oath of office, sir?
Yes.
If you are, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully-
And I will faithfully-
And impartially-
And impartially-
Discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform-
All of the duties-
All of the duties-
Incumbent upon me-
Incumbent upon me-
As a member of the school board-
As a member of the school board-
Of the city of Norfolk-
Of the city of Norfolk-
For a term beginning December 2021-
For a term-
Beginning December 2021-
For a term beginning December 2021-
And expiring December 31st, 2022.
And expiring December 31st, 2022.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
We now take a seat at the table.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Jones. Okay, I now call the meeting of the Norfolk Public School Board Work Session to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll. Here. Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here. Okay, first on our schedule, we have the Valburn Group. Are they connected?
They are.
Okay. What is that? Do we have a link? Does everyone have their access to the link on the email?
Yes.
Okay, can everyone hear me okay? Ms. Valburn, are you there?
I am.
Okay, and do we have Mickey on here as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you may begin with your present-
Thank you, will I be able to share screen? It's telling me that I'm not allowed to share screen yet, so I'll wait a minute. Okay. I'm co-host now, so let's see. Excellent. Is everyone able to see my screen? Oops, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, and you see it in presenter view, or do you see it in, you see the right view, just one slide?
One slide.
Excellent, thank you so much. So, thank you very much for having us. My name is Valda Valburn of the Valburn Consulting Group. We appreciate your opportunity to present to you all, so thank you, Dr. Birdsong and members of the board. I want to tell you a little bit about us, and then we'll get into how we will help support this work. So, we are a minority, woman-owned enterprise located, I'm located in Charlotte, North Carolina. Mickey is located in Florida. And what we do is we bring broad experience supporting schools across the country with strategy management, strategic planning, leadership development, all through the lens of equity. We help districts to really plan for their diversity, equity, and inclusion in anti-racism practices through building the capacity of leaders. Our company is comprised of a team of highly skilled practitioners who have all been in these roles from teacher all the way through to superintendent. I personally, I'm the former Executive Director of Charlotte Metlenburg Schools, where I was charged with overseeing organizational development, which includes professional learning opportunities. Prior to that, I was the Director of Professional Learning at ASCD in Virginia. I'm also a former State Instructional Improvement Specialist and did turnaround work in leadership coaching. And of course, I was a principal, assistant principal, and a classroom teacher. And as our Chief Operating Officer is Michael Pope, I'll let her tell you a little bit about herself.
Good afternoon, and I echo Valda's thanks for allowing us to be here today. So, a little bit about me, I've spent the last 40 years of my career in education, both with the New York City Public School System, and then retired from Broward County Public School System, six largest in the nation, just two years ago as their Chief of Student Support Initiatives and Recovery. Spent my career through all of the ranks from teacher to teacher leader, assistant principal, principal, on to district leadership, and then retired as part of the Cabinet in Broward County. And since my retirement there, I took on a role, took on the role of Senior Advisor, Whole Child Developer for New Teacher Center. And from there, I've become the COO of the Valburn Consulting Group, where we're really doing this work around equity. And it's the part that has, it's been the through line with my work from the time I was a teacher until present.
Thank you. So, we're currently working in several districts. I'm going to highlight a few. We, as a former employee of Charlotte Metlenburg Schools, upon my leaving, they decided that they wanted to contract with us. And so, we work very closely with CFS, still doing professional learning and leadership development. We also work in many districts, but the one that I want to highlight to you is that we are partnered with Alexandria City Public Schools. We did the strategic plan at Williamsburg City County Schools. And I am one of the consultants for UVA, where I work in their PLE program, their Leadership Development Program, supporting districts across the country, again, through the lens of equity. So, we do a great deal of leadership development and working with leaders to really think through the strategies that they would need to implement in order to move to a more equitable school system.
One of the things that we're really, really, that's really important to us in Valburn Consulting is that we are collaborative in every way and with every single one of our partners. We believe that whatever model, whatever we bring to the system, has to be co-created. That context matters, the local context matters, local voice matters. And we do not believe in a one-size-fits-all kind of a leadership of the work. So, we recognize that important to the conversation, important to the plans, are the board and the leadership dynamics. What is working, what has been effective organizationally, has to be considered. We have to work through some clear agreements and a work plan. And we have to absolutely honor the past and current work and assure that we are building on what has happened and what is working.
While we recognize that the Virginia School Board is a separate entity from NSBA, one of the things that we've prided ourselves on is really staying current to the current research. And one of the things that I think is really important for us to think about as it relates to board governance, is how that role is changing, right? And there's an important white paper that NSBA put out about reimagining school board leadership through the lens of equity. And I was really happy to see that because it does get us to really think differently around the work of setting policy, but through this lens of how do we make sure that we're equitably distributing funds? How do we make sure that we're, that the curriculum is reflective of who students are and that we're hiring the most effective teachers to work with the students that need them the most? And thinking about that idea of creating this safe learning environment, but also a brave learning environment where we can really support what's necessary to make sure that all students are getting what they need through the equity lens, and again, fostering that meaningful community engagement. We oftentimes talk about, you know, equity, and I don't know that we all define equity in the same ways, right? And so, I always want to center our work through the lens of what does equity mean and how do we ensure that we're helping districts and leaders to get to equity?
Yeah, there are many elements to the concept of equity. And level-setting and developing common understanding is critical upfront when we're working with a system around this. So, we at Valburn Consulting like to use the definition that you see here on the screen, knowing that there are many variations of how folks define equity. Not saying that one is better than the other, but level-setting and sitting with the team around what does equity really mean to you? And we bring this to the forefront. We see equity having, there are two elements. One fairness and the other inclusion. We also take the time to really unpack what equity is and helping folks to understand that equity and equality are very different. And then what is systemic equity? So, as a function of fairness, equity implies ensuring people have what they need to participate in life and to reach their full potential, to flourish. So, for every child that walks through your doors, every single one, there's this idea of how do we truly, fairly, meet this child's needs and help them to flourish? As a function of inclusion, equity ensures that essential programs, services, activities, technologies, all of what that child may need to flourish. And how do we include that child, who they actually are, their identity, their family, their history, their lived experiences, in the process of truly serving them? Again, unpacking the idea that equity is not equality, oftentimes in systems, we kind of bring those two concepts to one. So, we sit to this, and we know that equity is an expression of justice, ethics, and it is the absence of discrimination. So, we bring these conversations to the table. And then, again, sitting to the idea, what is systemic equity? How do we look at the systems? The complex combination of interrelated elements consciously designed to create support and sustain social justice. And we know that this is a robust system, and it's something that we really do have to work through as a collective.
One of the things that we always like to remind folks is that, you know, diversity is our reality, right? If you even look at who's on this call, right? So, we have diversity mastered, and we find that many districts, as they think about leadership and plan for it, they often fall back on this idea of, we're very diverse. And I always remind people that diversity is counting people, but inclusion is making people count. And so, we often remind folks that any work we do, whether it's governance work or leadership development or strategic planning, we want people to think about equity and inclusion in the area of diversity. And I think that matters even in the context of the work of the board. Really being, thinking through as we set policy, as we make decisions, are we doing so through the lens of what would be equitable? I think that it's important for us to consider this, that there's three really big buckets of work, right? And that is to cultivate the existing diversity, to foster inclusion and belonging, and to promote equity in all of the work that the board does. And that means making those organizational commitments to the culture and policies that support all of your students, all of your stakeholders, in the ways that they differ versus the ways that they're the same. Thinking about how we consider all the stakeholders' backgrounds so they feel supported, valued, affirmed, and welcomed in Norfolk Public Schools, and then removing those barriers to equity, being able to identify them and to remove them. A big part of that work is asking ourselves some tough questions, right? Which organizational systems and policies and practices foster or hinder equity and inclusion? And then which organizational practices need to be reviewed to determine the impact and experiences of those within the organization as well as those it serves? And so, we bring this lens as we do this work because we want to help the board to analyze how you're seen as individuals, how you're seen as a community, how do others see and experience you and the school system? And then also really begin to dismantle some of the negative narratives, right? So, how do we change the narratives? You know, who gets to create the narratives that are currently out there? And then how do we practice prioritizing and protecting and, you know, and really understanding, you know, who do our practices exclude? And how do we make sure that they're more inclusive? And then what do we do about it? And so, that's a big part of the way that we approach this work, is really thinking about it in that way of really disaggregating, you know, what our role is as a governance board through the lens of creating equitable environments. I think when we think about school systems, we always have to think about that top-down, right? And we want to make sure that the board is not far removed from impact to the instructional core, the ways in which students and teachers engage with content. And so, we always want to make sure that we're always considering that in our discussions around policy, practices, and behaviors.
And for us, it's also important that we bring in the research. We bring in not only the research, but a series of tools and frameworks to really put teeth into the conversation, really collect data to bring teeth into the conversation. So, it's not just sort of this pie in a sky type of conversation that we're having about equity. So, in advancing equity, what the research tells us is that as you develop a theory of action or a theory of change, that it has to account for historical racial traumas, and it has to ensure that traditionally marginalized groups have voice in the process. The research also tells us that boards must commit to setting up progressive vision and shared goals for the district with an emphasis on accountability. And priorities need to be connected to promoting equity, elevating the culture of the district and those that the district serves, effective communication about this work so that everyone understands the why, the teaching and learning aspects, you know, how do we make it culturally relevant in order for us to truly help every child thrive? And all of the other pieces that are connected to access, facilities, technology, budgeting, and everything else that has an impact on student learning. So, in reimagining, you know, this work, we're told by research that actions for equity must have boards setting visions and policy very directly around it. Under today's rule of governance and best practices, school boards must take seriously their role to create a district culture that strives not only for academic excellence, but acknowledges and addresses inequities, looks at the mistakes that have occurred in the past as learning opportunities, sees the work as one of constant and continuous improvement, and really just looking ahead to be better and to better serve the communities that we're trying to serve.
So, our hope in engaging with you is that we work together to understand the current reality, right? Acknowledge it and honor that existing work, but help to really create a pathway for getting to the ideal state. And we do so by grounding our work in the PELP coherence framework because we think it's really important that any work that we do around governance or around leadership takes into account the existing systems, structures, culture, stakeholders, and resources of the district. You know, this research says that unless you consider all those areas, any strategy that you do to implement change is not going to be as effective as it can be because you've not considered for each of these areas. You'll see that at the center of this graphic is the instructional core that I mentioned a moment ago, right? And the instructional core is encompassed of students, teachers, and content. So, the way that students and teachers engage with that content is directly attributed to the work of leadership and to the board, right? And so, when we use this, we help people understand how the work of the board, while it may seem that it's here, right? And we may say, well, that happens in the schoolhouse. We want to make sure that we're always connecting decisions, policies, programmatic decisions, those discussions, that they always find their way back to the instructional core. And so, part of our work is going to be to help to do that. We wish to really build the capacity for the desire change, but to come to understand what that desire change is through our collaboration. We don't come in and say, here's what needs to happen, and here's what you need to do. But instead, again, we want to co-collaborate in order to do this work. You know, this last slide really, really brings to mind this, why this is so necessary, right? It says, "School boards, we need to provide leadership to address the educational gaps that have plagued the education system and widened during the pandemic." The role of school leadership has changed because of the pandemic. I would venture to say that the role of school boards has changed as a result of the pandemic. And so, we don't have the blueprint for what that works, what that should look like, but we are committed to working together to develop collaboratively a plan for moving from the current reality to the ideal state. I know we did a lot of talking, and so we want to open up for questions and answers and to now just move into some dialogue.
If you'd like to start off with any questions for Val and Mickey? Anyone? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan, and then Dr. Gabriel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I guess my initial question is not so much for the Valburn Group. My question is really for you, Dr. Martin, and the leadership team. Can you just kind of reset for us where we are and what we're doing in terms of the discussion that we're having now? Are we entering into a contract with the Valburn Group? Is this an opportunity for us to have a few and out discussion in order to determine whether or not we're going to do that, the direction that we're going? Can you kind of just set for us where we are today from where we were at the end of last calendar year?
So, last, let's see, when was it, November, maybe, beginning of November? We decided to cancel our contract with the Council of Great City Schools, which we've been working with since last February on governance training. And so, the next step was to, well, and I explained this in an email, but in effort to continue with our governance training as seamlessly as possible, the, I turned to the Valburn Group because they have been working hand-in-hand with Dr. Birdsong on her strategic plan and also has been involved with the, you know, to just a certain extent, with the governance training when our Council of Great City Schools governance coaches would have meetings together with Dr. Birdsong, her team, and the Valburn Group. So, they've been, they've witnessed and been a part of our governance training from the beginning. And so, this is a service that they also offer. And, you know, I really just want to keep moving forward with the work we're doing and keep up that momentum, or I guess the best thing to say is to regain that momentum moving forward because it's really important that we have our goals, guardrails, norms, protocols, all of those things established particularly before the end of the school year. So, Dr. Birdsong has been, really enjoyed working with them. And so, Carlos and I met with them, and I was very impressed by them. And so, I'm bringing them here before you to be able to go through the process of asking questions and vetting them. And I'd really love to come to a consensus today and moving forward. Again, you know how I got, I just want to keep going forward and get this done. And then actually, you know, it's just, I just keep thinking about every meeting we have that without progress in our governance and having clear goals for our administration, it hurts children, right? We talk about this. And so, this is all an effort to move forward. Dr. Birdsong, we're already in a contract with the Valburn Group for the strategic planning. We haven't, I don't know that, is there anything you need to say about that? I mean-
So, you are correct. We are under contract with them for strategic planning efforts. And I explained that to you, that they have extensive experience, as you've heard, with governance training. And so, as you stated, we are moving right along with our strategic planning process. And based upon that, thought it was a good idea that we aligned their work to work with the governance team since they've already been working with the administration. It would be seamless. And based on what they demonstrated, they've done it. I feel confident that they can help us move forward. And I'm looking forward to moving forward.
Right.
Dr. Martin, then if I can follow up. So, I just wanted to get an understanding of if you or maybe the Valburn Group can discuss the work that we've done over the last several months, where they see us today, this seamless transition between goals and guardrails, where we are, is there a proposed timeline? Is the cost of this built into the existing contract? Just trying to understand the logistical pieces of it.
So, if I may-
Yes, please.
Yeah, so one of the things that we discussed when we were together was that we want to develop that scope of work with board membership input. Again, we don't come with a prepackaged plan and say, this is how it has to be. We think that collaboration is going to be extremely important. So, we do want to keep those goals and guardrails, move to adopt them. We want to maintain neutrality, but also, you know, build in some norms for how this work will go forward. We want to set some clear timelines, again, with the board's input, and again, honor the existing work. So, we're not proposing starting over again at all. What we do want to do is take the work you've done so far and then work with you to develop the scope of what the remaining work looks like. Again, in collaboration, I think that's extremely important. I think it's also important for us to think about, you know, what you all hope to have happen, but I think there's also is an opportunity for us to innovate and to look at what were the past issues? What was it that derailed the work going, that was already happening? And then move forward from there. I think that that's an important piece for us to also critically examine. So, we'll want to hear from you. Here's what was not working, here's where we stumbled, right? And here's what we need to get to that ideal state. Again, very collaborative, we're not coming with, this is how it has to be. You inform that process, and I think that that's what we want to see happen. We want to make sure that we're facilitating the right conversations, that we're getting input from everyone around what this work should look like moving forward. But again, honoring the existing work that's occurred to date.
Thank you, thank you for that. I just, for me, I would understand, this is the first opportunity I've had to have this discussion with the board and with the superintendent. So, this is our first effort at- So this is our first effort at collaborating around this in action. And so I'm asking the questions because, you know, as an individual board member, I wasn't, I didn't have the benefit of the discussions that we're having now. So my questions are just to try to get an understanding of where we are, where we're moving forward. And so even as you described, the board as a whole being involved in that direction, I'm just trying to get a feel for what we're trying to determine today and then what the next steps would be. So thank you for that response.
Just to be clear, Carlos and I are the only ones who have spoken with them so far. And so this opportunity is to do exactly what you're describing is for the full board to be able to ask, have their questions answered. Okay, Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Greetings, Valbrun Group, and thank you for joining us today. I enjoyed your presentation, I look forward to working with you all and keeping up that momentum as Dr. Martin had stated. I will be very frank and state that while I support the goals and guardrails that we had discussed previously, I wasn't buying into them 100%. And so I definitely look forward to conversations that we will have with the inclusive nature that you have described about discussing, you know, what things can we do to discuss items that we may not have felt comfortable with? And it's really about the academic piece, and this is where my question comes in. With your work with schools such as Alexandria, Williamsburg, and other Virginia public schools, can you tell us how you've worked with governance teams that have directly translated to good academic success for students, especially students in subgroup categories, that we really try to focus and identify students of color, students in poverty, gifted students, for example?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I'm glad you asked it. Because you'll see, you'll notice that as we spoke up to each of those slides, we incorporated the concept of equity because we ground all of our work in that. And so in all of our district engagements, we, even if they have not hired us specifically to do equity work, we always say that equity is the foundation from which you do this work. And we do so, again, with the lens of making that clear, clear connection to the impact to students, right? I'm a firm believer, as a former classroom educator and person who grew through the ranks of the school system, that all of the work that we do has to have a touch point that leads directly back into the classroom, right? So it has to impact student achievement, it has to impact the student experience that we create. And so in all of our engagements, we help our district leaders to think through, what is it that they need to have the capacity to be able to, one, identify where there are systems that need innovation, that need to be reexamined, but also setting really clear metrics for key performance, right? So those KPIs are going to be tied to, are we seeing growth for students? And are we being intentional about the impact that our decisions have on students of color, students of poverty, second language learners? Always consistently bringing it back to those questions. And moving away from the, did we do enough for the majority, right? Moving away from this every and all type of approach to instead understanding and asking the question, who are we missing in this decision, in this policy, in this practice, in this behavior that may be part of our operating norms, right, the way we do business? If we know that we traditionally missed some students, some student subgroups, it's imperative to go back and to examine that. And so that's a big part of our work. So to answer your question, we do set performance indicators that help to measure the impact of decisions, behaviors. Even about professional learning, we tie it back to how can this, how can this help to impact student achievement? And we'll do the same with governance work, is always thinking about putting the student, the student experience at the forefront of anything that we do, right? So I'm going to always, one of the things I always do is challenge people and say, what's in it for the kids? Right? So when the adults are around the table, they're making decisions about practices and policies, we always have to come back to how will this impact students? And which students will be lost, will be missing from this, will be impacted adversely from this decision? So I hope I answered your question because you asked about specifically tying it to student achievement. And I believe that all of the work needs to be tied directly to data points that are going to show us the impact. I don't know if you wanted to add to that, Mickey?
Yeah, I did, just thinking about the work also taking place in two ways. One, that we're looking at an individual journey where board members are looking at their own idea of what equity is, what has been their lived experience, and helping them to develop competence in that area. And then looking at the system, what are the policies, the practices, the processes that you need to really review and make shifts around as a board in order to have that impact that you're looking to have on those students?
I see a hand, Lauren.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation or for the opportunity to meet you and ask questions related to the governance training and what you might be able to support us with. So there's a couple of things. One is more, and I'm not sure if the question was answered about the costs and whether the costs were incorporated into the contract already. Dr. Martin, I don't know if you're able to... Are the costs already incorporated in the strategic planning contract?
No, they are not because we only contracted them to do strategic planning.
Right.
And so specifically, we haven't discussed how much it would cost because, again, this needed to be an initial discussion with the board if you're even interested in moving forward.
Okay. So in that regard, so, you know, I heard a lot about not starting over the process. And as you heard, I think Dr. Gabriel kind of alluded a little bit to it, there was some, you know, discontent with the process that was used to arrive at the goals and guardrails. And there may be some, you know, that, to me, you know, what I understood was to be, was one of the reasons why we kind of shifted from that work. So can you describe to us what not starting over looks like to you?
Yeah, so not starting over means us critically examining what, examining what has been done to date. We need to hear that from you all, right? I want to know what led to that discontent because I think that we need to develop the process for moving forward together. That's what I don't want to do. I don't want to say, here's going to be the process. So in our efforts to be collaborative, it's a co-design of what that process looks like. And I think that requires us to unpack what did not go well and then make sure that we solve for that by putting in place the appropriate upgrades. And again, it goes, this is one of the things that we are very, very, very passionate about is that any work that we do needs to be collaboratively developed so that we don't get to a point where we say, oh, this isn't working for us and have to do a mid-course correction. Now, given that we're coming in behind a group that has already done that work, I do think we need to revisit those goals and guardrails. They're not yet adopted. So let's have that conversation around, you know, both the process and the results. If we need to revisit those goals and guardrails, then I think that that's primary as the work that we need to be thinking about. And so, again, we're very open to that. I do think too, and just from what I have watched some of the board meetings, and I did watch many of the sessions with Council of Great City Schools. And I think it's going to be important that one of our initial steps is to do some team building and to really think about developing norms for how we work together. So that will be one of the initial things that we propose is to spend the time, let's take a step back, right? So let's take a small step back. I'm not saying start from scratch, but I do think it's important to take a step back to examine where things kind of went wrong, but to also develop some norms for how this work will move forward. But that has to be done collaboratively. It can't be that we come in and say, this is how we want you to act. And I will tell you, I got the impression that you were being told what to do in those previous sessions, and it was not being done in collaboration. That's what it felt like. And so I want to make sure not to have that same tenor and tone to our work together.
And I would add, that's not to say that, you know, we're not going to bring, you know, some things to the table. You know, we have some experience with this work of some successes. And so we want to share with you what has worked, you know, with other boards. We want to share with you, you know, the frameworks that we use, of course, the research behind it all so that we can, when we present that, then we can plan forward and really move on solid ground with direction that is, again, has been developed by us collaboratively.
Okay, thank you. And you touched on one of the next questions, which was, you know, had you, you know, watched some of our governance training sessions and meetings with the Council of Great City Schools? And wanted to get your thoughts on that. So it sounds like the next step might be that you talk to each of us individually, perhaps, to kind of figure that out? Is that something that you have thought about?
Yes, actually, it's interesting you say that because that is one of the things that we proposed was to do some one-on-one discussions and really understand what is working and what isn't working from each individual's perspective and create a kind of a safe space for them to be able to articulate that to us. And so that is, that is one of the first actions, is to do some one-on-ones and then to come together and to really think through, you know, what should the norms be for how we do this work going forward? And then really begin to collaborate on what that scope of work will look like together.
We're actually in a process with another board of doing exactly that. It's a board of 20 plus, and we're having one-on-one meetings around a set of questions that we co-created, co-developed, and getting that input in order to really build our support moving forward.
Yeah, it's really important that this work be designed by you, right? Because, you know, it's your board. And we want to serve as the facilitators, we want to serve as the people who bring resources and bring the research. But ultimately, it's driven by you. We want to be able to push the conversations, we want to be able to, I like to say, we like the whole push, pull, and nudge, right? And to stretch our thinking around the possibilities. Because that's what it is. I mean, when you're really being innovative and you're thinking about, how do we do this board? Through the equity, how do we do this through the lens of equity? How do we do this in ways that are going to move the system forward? We want to be a part of that journey with you all.
And there has to be a bit of organic development around it.
Are you good, Ms. Basin?
For now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My echo? Oh, okay. Sorry. Very happy to see the background that you're bringing to us. The fact that you've gone through each layer of education, classroom teacher, which we all know has a lot of challenges along with a lot of rewards of working with children. And then you moved up to leadership positions as the building administrator, the principal, and then you moved on to central office. So you have a wide range of personal experience and a lot of practice in what you do. And I know you wouldn't have moved on to central office had you not been successful at the lower levels. So that's exciting. And then the other thing that I'm particularly happy about is to see how many times you focused on children in your presentation. You talked about the focus on children, you talked about putting children in the forefront of everything. And it kind of reminded me of what we thought about when we used to think about no child left behind, which was always kind of my favorite. And then the next thing is collaboration. Collaboration, I think, is the thing that this board has had the most challenges with. And so team building and collaboration.
Oh, she got muted.
Ms. Basin's mic was open, Ms. Campson's mic was closed. Ms. Basin muted her mic, and that's why.
Okay, I missed that whole last sentence or two.
Oh, thank you. All right, maybe I was, I'm still echoing. But anyway, I'll just wrap up what I wanted to say is the collaboration, the learning to build a team. It doesn't help to be a leader if nobody's behind you. So you need to learn how to do, build a team by recognizing the strengths of each of the members that you're working with and go with that. You need to listen to their voice, and then together, we need to collaborate and reach consensus. And I think that's where we struggled some over the last three years. So I'm really looking forward to this, not instruction, but this new partnership that we are hopefully being forming with you. I think it's really going to take us to places that we want to go. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for saying that. And I think that one thing that I think we should also consider is that because we are already working on the strategic plan, this is another opportunity to create that coherence across this work and to make sure that it's seamless. We struggled, one of the reasons why I watched all of the governance sessions was because it was important to us to make sure that we were well-informed as we were approaching strategic planning work. And so not being directly tied to Council of Great City Schools, and in many of the conferences that actually I was able to have with AJ, we struggled with being on two very different places. And so I see this as an opportunity for us to really create that seamless integration of the work of strategic planning as well as the work of board governance. And so our hope is that we can bring that to this work as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, just additional comments. So I was comfortable with the Council of Great City Schools training that we were doing. We also had worked with the Virginia School Boards Association prior. I was comfortable with that training as well. What we both had in common from my perspective, which I think I'm sensing in what you're presenting, is being able to have some courageous conversations around what the data tells us. You all mentioned about equity and dealing with systemic issues and so forth. Part of, from my perspective, where I think the, I'll use the description, we're using the breakdown of whatever occurred with the council. We worked on goals and guardrails, we worked on various different phases. Not all of us were there at the same time, not all of us did the homework. And so at times, when it came time to have the courageous conversations, we were in different places. And I think one of the areas that I still have a concern based upon past work and what I'm reading in your work is we did a needs assessment. And part of the needs assessment showed that black students were trailing, were not performing at the rate that we expect and in comparison to some of the other subgroups. And so as we were working on our goals, the prioritization of black students was coming out in our goal language. And I think that caused some discomfort because the perception was that if you have a goal that speaks to black students proficiency in math, that somehow that implies that you aren't giving focus or priority to other students. And so I think that in order for us to move forward and have collaboration and some of the things that you've talked about already and that you have in your presentation, you gave a definition of equity. I'm not sure what our board's definition of equity is. I'm not sure where the strategic plan is having this definition of equity. But if our data tells us that there are students that need to have focus and attention, and we are, and we struggle with how we then take that data and then actualize it into goals that then feed into the strategic planning of the administration, we'll get stuck again. And so what I think we experienced with the SBA was when BSBA consultants challenged us to have courageous conversations, that was difficult. I think the Council of Great City Schools was challenging us to have courageous conversations, and that proved to be difficult. And if we're going to do as much of the equity that you're describing in your presentation, I think unless we are clear upfront around how we can have these courageous conversations, how we can truly be committed to what the data is telling us, and if we're going to have conversations about... And if we're going to have conversations about research, truly having conversations about research. Have that drive us at the center of our collaboration and not just um. And not be driven by personal anecdotes or personal experiences or what we think our electorate is going to say. That if we're going to be child-centered and data-driven, then we truly have to be that. Even when the conversations become tough and the data. Uh, aren't always something that that we feel good about. And I think that's what's at the center of. Some of our struggles around collaboration, because I don't think we have built. A shared commitment to those courageous conversations and the real work around equity. We pass resolutions, we pass policies, we have conversations. But then when something stares us in the face, that then says that a group of students, I don't care who they are. Require certain things in order to be successful. Being able to uh agree to that and then be able to. Make sure that we are communicating with our constituents and with the community. Why that's important and why that's good for all students is where I think we struggle. And I think that's systemic in Norfolk Harbor schools.
It it's it's actually systemic across the country, I will tell you. So don't don't own that as only being something that happens in Norfolk Harbor schools. In all of our work, we 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 think that there's a lot of upfront work that has to be done. The board gives strategic voice to what the community wants, right? What it values, what it hopes, what it dreams. And unless we have shared understanding of the language in order to have these conversations, then we won't have fruitful conversations. So a big part of this work is to take the time to to develop that that shared understanding, that shared meaning, which is why we we shared the definition of equity. So that we're level set on what equity looks and then about what does equity look like in our work? How do we take ownership and enactment as a board around creating equity? But you have to first have a conversation about what that looks like. I think the second part of what I heard you say in terms of how that's communicated out, right? If 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 all the community hears is we have a goal for black kids or for black boys, for example. And and they're left to believe, what what does that mean for white kids or white boys, whatever the case is? That's a communication piece that we also have to ensure that our community understands our purpose. It recognize why that that goal is important. And I also don't see it as this means that we don't do for all other students, right? We're saying that we're emphasizing the impact of our work on black indigenous persons of color based on data, right? But we're also making efforts to increase uh student achievement in all areas. That's a communication piece. And one of the things that we also pride ourselves on is that we help our districts that we work with communicate to their communities. We will write talking points, right? We will ensure that folks truly understand the work that you're doing. And don't see it as being done in a vacuum. Because that, because that's what happens, right? Sometimes you might say, oh, we have a goal around our African-American children. And it and to our non-African-American stakeholders, they say, what about me? What about my students, right? And so it's really about the ways in which we communicate that. So we build that shared. Understanding of the importance of the work and really helping our community and stakeholders understand why equity is important. And how traditionally marginalized groups have traditionally been underperforming. It's not because of who they are racially, it's because of systems that are in place that we're attempting to dismantle. I it it all boils down to the way in which we communicate this, right? And again, because you're the boards, you give that strategic voice. We want to equip you with the knowledge, the tools, the language to be able to convey that. To your stakeholders so they understand it and they can come on this journey with us and not see it as a battle between them and us, right? That's all really important when you talk about this language of diversity, equity and inclusion. Did I answer your question, Mr. Jordan? Is there, did I answer your question? Did I miss any part? Yeah.
No, you you were, you were fine. I was just putting it out there for for your consideration and I appreciate uh your response.
Mr. Clanton's up next.
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin. Um, I actually have a question directed to the superintendent. Um, when we talk about uh this actually, the racial makeup of our division. Um, what percentage would you say our division is African-American? Sixty-seven percent. And then the white student population falls in. About twenty-two. Okay. So with that sixty-seven percent, just looking at a regular hundred percent, fifty percent is even. Fifty-one would be a majority, but we're at sixty-seven percent African-American. So when I hear that, and particularly when I hear about the um, some of the angst that some. Uh, that was kind of brought up about some of the things that we were seeing, was that the majority of our division is African-American. And so there are still other subsets and other groups that are there. And so when we look at our goals and then having those courageous conversations. Those particular groups are, that's the majority. That's the group that we have in front of us. That's the group that in any, um, with anything that we do. Of course, if you move the majority up, your numbers are going to move. And I think that's one of the conversations that we had. One of the things in the conference that Dr. Martin said that we worked, um, when we were having our conversations with the Valverde Group that. Um, I kind of walked away with was this collaboration piece. You know, my my background is in training, education's in training and what I. When we went through with VSBA, we went through the Council of Great City Schools. Um, I think we all approached and walked into these situations um with an open lens to try to get the work done. And I think that um, it also mentioned, I think, um, Ms. Valverde, you you said you watched some of these meetings. And which you even took away with your own perception. You weren't sitting in the room, but you were watching them. And I think what a lot of individuals had gotten, and that's where it kind of came to the head for a lot of us. Was that there was no longer that sense of collaboration or even um a trust level and and respect level had kind of broke down. And so when you don't have that. Um, you you don't necessarily move along with it. And so for me personally, at this particular point, as an individual board member. I long support what our board chair is stating to get us back on track. Um, and I have seen the work that's being presented to us here and a collaborative environment um method. And I also ask, who have you worked with? Because I think it's important to also understand the the things that we are under. And when we're in the Commonwealth of Virginia, understanding how education is, policy is here um in the Commonwealth. Um, and how we kind of work to move, um, move the ball. And so with that, I. I was very pleased with what I've seen. I'm very pleased with the conversations. I appreciate the things that um my colleagues have brought up and asking. Um, I believe that at this particular juncture, this is a great opportunity for us to get that alignment. Because I think I brought that up and several individuals rocked that up about the strategic plan, which will be. The guiding force for the division for the, not only what we've established as goals, which is what we were being asked to do. But also it really dictates to the superintendent, her administration, the actions that need to take place in order to reach those particular goals. And when there's a disalignment between the two or confusion between the two. That's where I believe that there's uh some of that context of conflict kind of kind of rose and and came together. I think this is a great opportunity for us um to, like um Ms. Campson mentioned. Individuals who have been in the classroom, who have served in leadership at the building, building level. And who also served in leadership at the administration level and bring um various perspectives. Um, we got a lot of different perspectives around this table. And I like the idea of stepping back. To have some of these courageous conversations amongst us personally as board members first. Um, now we have a new board member that's here at that table who has not been privy to those conversations. And so this gives us an opportunity as a whole. To have those conversations collectively as a group and to begin to talk about the, you know, even when we look at the goals and guardrails. Uh, and I, and I want to make sure we're clear on that, that we're not talking about throwing them out. We're talking about going back and reassessing them. Now with a different perspective and a voice here with a new board member, but also after we've had a collective conversation as a governance team. Our norms, our protocols for ourselves moving forward, then reassessing these um, these uh goals and guardrails moving forward. Is that what I heard? I just want, yes, no, I just want to make sure that people can hear. So that's what I heard in every perspective. We will come back. Because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we've got clear direction to leadership and 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 all of us have been around here every year. Um, superintendent evaluation time, we've had this pandemic, it's been a whole lot of different things. So you could put the gamut of all this stuff that's kind of disrupted us. But I think this is an opportunity for us here to get some work done, to come together. Um, regardless of what of our connections would have been with VSBA or Council of Great City Schools. I think that it's an opportunity for us to level set, to kind of to come together as a team and to begin to have um that conversation. You know, we, if I'm not mistaken, we, you know, we adopted a policy on equity. And that was probably what, back in, what, twenty fifteen, sixteen, something like that? So, and I agree with Mr. Jordan. You know, I don't want to get into the posture of we. And I think that we've been trying to do that. I think that our superintendents brought us some budgets that are starting to move with that. I think that's what we're hearing with our drive for five from the administration side. But it's uncommon upon us that from the governance team, from this board, to meet that. Um, to make clear as to what our goals and objectives are so that we can ensure that all of our students are being taken care of. So um, I appreciate the presentation and I'm ready to get to work as far as I'm concerned.
One of the things that I keep hearing, but hasn't been said overtly is we need consistency. We need to move forward, do the work and be consistent and actually follow through to where, you know, where. It's being implemented and we begin to be able to monitor. And we just haven't gotten there yet. And so I'm, I'm, consistency is what the district needs. Um, Dr. Ralston, you've been very quiet over there. Do you have any questions or comments? And mute yourself.
Yeah, from hearing the conversation, I am um very pleased with some of the things that have been said. And I know as a board member, I know one of the things that I said when um I became a board member is that my focus. Was going to be centered around student achievement and student learning. And I heard that word a lot in the presentation. I feel like that's a big part of what. Um, I hope I bring to the board and, you know, helping to, for us to stay focused on that that being our our mark in terms of. Creating policy or practices is that we're really looking at student learning and student achievement. And I just kept hearing that over and over. And I was just bubbling over hearing that word, you know, in the presentation, because that, it is ultimately what we do.
The business of schools, the business of schools is to ensure that is what they need, right? And so I think that starts at the very top with the board. I think one of the things that I I think as as we think about like what that taking a step back looks like. We also have to acknowledge and repair harm that has been done. Uh, and it sounds like, you know, we can't get to to these trusting relationships until we put in place. Um, you know, those norms for how we'll work together, but also to kind of address that. And so we we will be asking to facilitate a dialogue, both those one-on-ones, but also as a group. Around what will it take to kind of repair whatever harm has been done so that we can move to high performance. Particularly because, you know, you have a new board member. And if you, if you think about that whole um stages of team development, right? Forming, starting warming to performing, right? We we know there's going to be some storming that happens as you're, you know, trying to get to high performance. And so that's why we put in place, you know, the norms and we really do the work of building trust so that you can be a high-performing governance. Uh, a governance board. Um, and so we will take that time. I think it's important to take that time and that stepping back to acknowledge where we have to do that repair work. So we can move forward um in very collaborative and and and, um, you know, ways that really honor the relationships. So that that's important too. When we talk about the journey, we take people on, we talk, we talk about self-first. Looking in the mirror and acknowledging your your lived experience and how you show up. But then there's the relationships, right? How across cultures, across difference, you move to become high-performing and then look at the organization. And it has to happen in that order. And so, you know, we can't run to just talk about the organization and not consider the relationships that you all have or need to have or need to repair. In order to be a high-performing team. And so that's, that's the approach that we take to, towards governance work. And again, very collaboratively developed through our interactions with you.
I think we we also recognize that, you know, issues of race, justice, equity are are issues that are very much emotionally charged. Um, and so based on, you know, the experience, individual experience of folks sitting around the table. Um, we know that we have to be not only respectful of that experience and their thinking, but we also have to be adaptive. And understanding that their perceptions and feelings, whatever they may be, comes from a place of their truth. And and so honoring that, understanding that and helping everyone move into the direction of of the common goal of serving the community. You know, a- as a community-serving organization, um, you know, we have to work through those issues to get to the the that common goal. Um, so respecting that and then helping everyone move in the right direction.
And again, by providing that guidance, but also building those accountability. So we will push the conversation to now, how do we create accountability around moving this forward?
Well, thank you, um, Val and Nikki. Um, so the next steps is I want to get a consensus of how everyone's. You know, feeling about moving forward with the Valverde, Valverde Group. Um, but also the missing pieces, the, is the contract. So I was hoping that. We would be able to begin um governance training on next Wednesday from two to five and start with the. Team building and norms and protocols, which a long overdue. Um, but without the contract, I don't know that we'd be able to do that so far. So we may need to reschedule that.
We're 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 quite quite flexible and so we will provide you with a uh a pricing plan. Um, one of the things, because we're already in contract with you all, if if it's easier for you to just do an extension or an addendum, we'll be, we can work with you on making that happen as well. So. Uh, you let us know. And also if you'd like for us to leave this session so you can have a discussion about whether or not you want to move forward, we'll perfectly want to do that as well. So you let us know if you want us to not be part of your ongoing deliberations and we will, we will take a bye.
Well, I actually would prefer that you stay on, just in case there are any new questions that arise and we can deal with it right here, if you don't mind. Um, go ahead, Ms. Basin.
We're, we're not able to hear. So I'm not, I'm not sure if you're attempting to address something that we need to address. We're, we're not able to hear you at all.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Um, we're, we're kind of doing two, two modes of meeting structure here. Um, so what I was saying is that I think it's important that we have the one-on-one conversations before. I know I'm comfortable to make any decision about whether uh I want to move forward or not. I I'm not able to to come to any decision about that today. Um, because I would like to give and share my perspective. Uh, about what I hope to get out of this work. And I also want to have the opportunity to ask you. Um, how you might approach uh the work and have that one-on-one. Um, so what I was saying, you know, there, I I respect everyone's perspective about the previous governance training work. Um, but I don't necessarily agree with that. Um, and as you've seen through watching some of our meetings. Um, there is an extreme level of distrust and um. Uh, I don't believe is a function of the the governance training that we've had. I think it's all us. Um, and I take accountability, you know, I think we should take accountability as a board for that. Um, so with that, you know, without that piece, without having the one-on-one, without the contract information. Um, you know, that's, that's where I stand personally.
All right. Started having a little problem with my thing, banging my head, but I'm not coming through. Okay. I I can understand, I can understand Ms. Basin's concerns and wanting to have more information. Uh, we do need some kind of deadline so that this doesn't drag on. So maybe, and I'm not sure how, I'm sure they're very busy, but perhaps they could start doing. A phone call, a phone call or a Zoom, uh, thirty minutes or so, up to thirty minutes. With each of the members over the next, you know, the next few days moving in. So that could be done before Wednesday. And by then we would probably have the contract information that we could also immediately share with everyone. So that maybe next Wednesday. share with everyone. So that maybe next Wednesday, we would have the opportunity to discuss it and then make a decision. And that way we could move forward because the clock's ticking. But on, on the other hand, it's very important for us to honor what she's saying and I, and I can understand that. And so maybe that would be a way we could still, we may not be able to have the training session next Wednesday, but maybe we could put everything in place for it.
I'm committed to governance training, have been for 10 years. I remain committed to it now. I think it is critical. I believe in the pride of being a board of distinction. I believe that excellence in the classroom starts with excellence in the boardroom. From the collaborative standpoint, so Dr. Martin, when I saw the email about potential training for next week, the reason I was raising the concern is I didn't know where the two o'clock schedule came from for next Wednesday. And, because I wasn't sure I was going to be available for that. And then in the, what you just mentioned about potentially starting with norms and protocols, to me, if it's going to be collaborative, then I think we should start with a collaborative process from the beginning and then model that all the way, all the way through. The other thing I think is important for us as a board is we have to be able to try to do things in order, in terms of our role. So if there is a scope of work that either is being proposed to us, or if there's a scope of work that we're proposing to the consultants for them to build upon, they need to understand what our expectations are. They then respond to the, give us a scope of work and a projected cost based upon our policies. Some things may be added on to an addendum. I don't know what it may be. It could, it could trigger competition. But what my recommendation is going forward is that we be clear on the scope of work that we're asking them to potentially do with us. Have them map it out from their perspective. Give us a projected cost. And then when we, if we approve or if it's just added on to an additional contract, the entire governance team is clear on what the expectations are, what the deliverables are, what the cost is. And then we all know that upfront going forward. And then that then would allow for the Valbrun Group to then engage in any additional discussions they would like to have with us individually to help do that scope. And it's, you know, up to them to decide and working with the administration, whether or not this is something that falls into their existing contracts or something that they bill us for later. Then in essence, if they spend two or three hours talking to us in order to help put this together at our request, that we make sure that we are either compensating them in the contract that emerges, compensates them in the contract that exists, or perhaps it's something that's, that's comped. But I think it's important that we follow some type of business structure so that we're clear on what we're doing, what the cost is, and as Ms. Camps has said, what the timelines are. And then that allows for all of us then to collaborate from the beginning and to work together to meet our milestones that may emerge.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Does anyone have anything to add to what Mr. Jordan said? Good. Anything else?
So let me just go back to this, this contract piece here. So we're currently on a contract with the Valbrun Group to do strategic planning. We're asking them to bring on some governance training. And would that be, I guess, an addendum to the current contract that we have? Is that what we're, they're thinking?
That's what it appears to be, yes.
Okay. The only thing that we don't have, I guess, is a figure as to the scope of the work of how much it would cost of an addendum. So my next question is directed at Mr. Cloud. I guess with a contract that we're under, if we wanted to make an addendum to whatever contract that we have in place, it's in our, right, we can do that, right?
You could do it, however, I know nothing about the current contract.
Okay.
My initial reaction is that I would not do that. At this, sorry, I don't have a
Yeah, that's okay.
If you can suggest anything, do not delay the board that. What I was going to say is I would have to read the current contract, but it sounds to me like this would involve separate duty, additional money, a separate term. I would not do this. My initial reaction is I would not do this as a amendment to the contract for the future. So I would have to look at that contract. I would have to get a much more detailed sense of what exactly is going to be done. And then we can begin to draft that and how much it's going to cost and how the process, something, you know, not that we're bound to it, but the contract with the council operates in school or something like that. Something maybe about 10 pages long, what we can do, what laws, what government, what can be changed. So, but that's, that's my first reaction to hearing all this. But I can't really, until I know more about what's proposed and to see what's the existing contract and how much it is for and what this term is, it sounds like it's going to place for a while. My initial reaction is that we do this as a set.
Val, were you able to hear that?
I, I was. So, yeah. So I, I, we, I will say this, just as, as you consider this, if, if you're saying that you want us to have these one-on-one conversations with every board member, prior to determining whether you will contract with us, I, I have to tell you that there's a lot of time that would, that would require for us to have these one-on-ones. And, and, and there are costs associated with that as well, because that is part of the pre-planning. So I just, I do want to put that out there as a consideration. Our hope was that, you know, we would develop the scope of work with you and do a monthly cost for each meeting for us to be on site if that's what we decide. But again, we, we have some flexibilities there. We are, we're in an existing contract. But I, but if you're saying that in order to make that decision, that you're asking us to do these one-on-one meetings first, I, I, I worry about the amount of time that will take as well as the investment of our time then to say, then to have you then say, well, we want to go with someone else. So I just, I just need that to be a consideration as, as we think about what this looks like.
Thank you. And it's just going back to, so Dr. Martin, if I, my understanding was that you were doing a general consensus around where the board was. I think in my original conver, comments, I mentioned that based on what I'm seeing here, experience there that I'm comfortable with moving forward. However, I, I give to, to Mr. Cloud and his recommendation regarding the contract piece. And I think that we need to clear that up, that the conversation should have took place as to what that contract may potentially look like and as well as an overall amount. But I'm comfortable with, with moving forwards. That's where my general consensus is, with, what's been presented here. But as far as a separate contract and being able to work with that or whatever scope we can, to have these conversations under the continue, continuation of the strategic planning, I, I, I don't know. But I do believe that we need to, to tighten up what that contract looks like and figuring out exactly what the total amount is so that we can move forward.
Val, to ease your reading, I was going to say, if you have a standard form contract that you currently do for these services, that would be a great place to start and we could send it to them with notes and we could discuss it, assuming that's the will of the board that pursues that.
Absolutely. I can send that.
Okay, great. Is there anyone here who is completely opposed to starting the contract review process and moving to the next step?
I'm not opposed to receiving a proposal.
Okay.
All right. I, I didn't hear Mr. Jordan. I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan.
He's not opposed to receiving a proposal?
Right. Because the proposal and what's, and the terms in it will help determine how much the cost is, which then has a lot of impact on other things. And so what we did with the council agrees to these goals, we came in, we reviewed the whole scope of work before we voted on it. And we did something similar with, with BSBA and I just think it's just standard, standard practice.
Thank you. Okay. So Val, do you understand what we've asked of you?
Yes, I can put together a standard memorandum of understanding with the scope of work that includes only the work of the board governance with a per session cost. We try to do it at all inclusive costs. So it'll be a per session that it will include our travel to be on site, you know, depending on what happens with the world, right? And so, so that will just give you a kind of, you'll have a number. We, I, I know we had discussed doing this between January and June. And so that'll be kind of like the, how I do the math on that scope of work, if that works for everybody. Because, yeah, because, because the thinking was also that the strategic plan would be completed and ready for adoption no later than May 1. And so we would try to, try to marry this work with the work of the strategic plan because we're going to be on site for some of that to begin with and, and that kind of thing. So I will put together a two pager that goes through the scope of work that has our, our contract agreement and, and the scope of work will have price in the next to it.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, we're off our normal meeting schedule, which hasn't looked normal in a while. And so we normally meet the first and third Wednesdays of the month. And of course, with the new year and coming back last week, we pushed it to the second and third. And so if, you know, it, it truncates the timeline for preparation for our business meeting on the 19th. And so that would be the opportunity to review and the earliest possibility for a vote. Okay.
So we will have that to you for that 19th discussion and, and we will not plan, I know you had originally start, had started originally thought that we would be there on the 19th. And so what we'll do is instead aim to have that for you to have discussion around it on the 19th. So I'll get that to you as soon as possible. And then we will wait to hear back from you around next steps.
Okay.
And plan for.
I will get your contact information from the email from my mark.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Wait, did, okay, sorry, my, my screen moved around. So I just want to thank you for entertaining our questions and, and hearing us out. And, and thank you for your presentation and look forward to hearing more from you over the next week.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time. We have an opportunity to come before you all. So thank you so much.
Be well, everyone. Bye-bye.
Yes, stay healthy.
Yes, everybody. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay.
I think we can take it off now. We can take them off now.
All right.
Thank goodness.
Are we done with this for today, right?
So next up on our agenda, we have the school board mandated COVID-19 vaccinations for staff update. Good evening, Mr. Billups. How are you?
Good evening.
Are we moving into closed session?
No.
No, okay. We're not in closed session. You can proceed.
Go and proceed. Okay. School Board Chair, Dr. Martin, Mr. Clanton Vice Chair in his accents, school board members, Dr. Birdsong, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to bring you an update with regards to the vaccination mandate as well as the associated testing requirements that came along with that. So to start, just as a recap, on October the 6th, that was the date that you wrote it to mandate that the, it's, your employees either be fully vaccinated against the COVID-19 or submit to weekly testing. Then on December 15th, the following progressive discipline for non-compliance was recommended and is currently being implemented. The first violation would have been a, a warning letter via a letter of concern. Second, a two-day suspension with pay. And then third, a recommendation for termination. Where are we currently? As of the date that this data was provided to you on January the 7th, here's the status of our employees' vaccinations. 4,253 of our employees are fully vaccinated, representing 85%. 74 of them are partially vaccinated, representing 2%. Not vaccinated at all, 519. And then no response at all, 171 individuals. Now, the individuals who have not reported their vaccination status are classified in the following job categories. Administrators, zero or 0%. Classified, we have 25 individuals representing 15%. Non-classroom teachers, two, representing 1%. Part-time employees, 136, representing the largest group of 79%. And then teachers, eight, representing 5%. Employee reported reasons for non-vaccination. We have 37 individuals who are seeking the medical exemption. 129 are seeking a religious exemption. 238 have told us that they were going to submit to the weekly testing. 94 told us that they were going to schedule a vaccination. 18 said that they would not vaccinate, request an exemption, nor select the weekly test option. And three individuals, no response, checked off no response at all. Now, the weekly testing, per your mandate, any employee who's not fully vaccinated needed to submit to the weekly testing and submit their results unless they were exempted from vaccination and testing for medical or religious reasons. The results are due each Wednesday by midnight. The results must include a collection date within that week's window. For example, the results that were due on January the 5th were required to have a collection date of December 30th through January the 5th. These employees were provided with specific weekly testing instructions, procedures, and they were also sent reminders on December 9th, 16th, the 29th, as well as on January 4th of this year. The 18 individuals who self-identified as unwilling to comply with the board's mandate were also included in the January 4th communication as a courtesy to give them the opportunity, and again, the were also included in the January 4th communication as a courtesy to give them the opportunity, and again, and the information in which to comply. This is therefore your, the weekly testing procedures. This is the information that was provided to inform the employees of a hyperlink where they could check on testing sites as well as the test results due dates, as well as what the acceptable test range dates were as well. Now, what did we learn in the first week when this information was due? There were 559 employees that we considered to be out of compliance. Out of compliance meant that they either did not submit to weekly testing results for one reason or another. So they didn't submit to weekly testing result, testing, nor did they submit a vaccination card to indicate that they were fully vaccinated. However, of the individuals who did submit to the weekly testing, 157 of them submitted negative results. 29 of them submitted positive results. So almost 200 individuals were able to submit appropriately and accordingly as requested. 11 individuals, we say results not accepted because we had individuals who were simply downloading any kind of document, I think, just to say they put something in the system. So it could have been a blank sheet of paper, something that was unrelated to the whole testing, just they input something, but it was not what we asked for. And then 16 individuals were on some type of approved or extended leave, so therefore, they were not part of this window. But the main point here is that 559 individuals were out of compliance. Now, of the individuals who are out of compliance with the January 5th weekly testing submission requirement, they're classified in the following job categories. Readministrators, representing 1%. Classified staff members, representing 35% or 198. Non-classroom teachers, 2% for 13 individuals. Part-time employees, the largest group, 44% or 244. And then teachers, 18%, representing 101 individuals. Our next steps, we would be continuing to collect this weekly COVID-19 test result information, and employees will continue to report their results through our HR-created Microsoft forms that we're using to help us track this information. And our employee relations teams will continue to work with this mandate as it has been presented and voted on by you all. So at this time, I'll entertain whatever questions we have.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
If I may, before the board engages in the conversation about this, I'd like to add something for the board to consider. Our school division, the administration, is working extremely hard to comply with your mandate, and we understand it to be a mandate. And we will certainly comply with that. However, we are asking for some flexibility at this time. As you know, there is a nationwide shortage of tests, and we do believe that the majority of our staff who are not in compliance with the mandate, they have reached out to us to express tests being canceled, not being able to get appointments, tests not being available. And there are some who are just going to be non-compliant, and we will be able to identify them. Also, in working with our VDH colleagues, they are now offering more testing opportunities at Military Circle Monday through Thursday. And we do believe that will open up more opportunities. I know the thought, and we too, we understand that this was a mandate provided to the administration in November or October. We were, as soon as the mandate was directed, we certainly communicated that directive to staff. Mr. Billups has shared with you how many times reminders were sent to staff in the whole division and then individually. But we do want to show some compassion. If you look at the numbers, it appears that the majority of people who are impacted by this are our part-time workers. But we also have, who are certainly very, very important to our mission. And we have classroom teachers who are unvaccinated as well, who, many, it appears that they are attempting to be compliant with the board's mandate. We're simply asking that you provide a little bit of leniency. Perhaps consider making a new deadline of February 9th as, you know, when test results have to be submitted, your fully vaccinated status card, things of that nature. Because we believe by that time, the system should work itself out in terms of there being availability of tests, appointments not being canceled, and it will certainly help with morale at this time. Because we do believe that there are teachers and staff members who are really trying very hard to do what they need to do to either test or make sure their information is provided to the Department of Human Resources. So as you gather this data, as you review this data, we're just asking for that flexibility. Again, we understand the mandate, we understand the importance of that being vaccinated. We get that. We know that's the number-one mitigation strategy is to have people vaccinated so that we can all get out of this pandemic. But we're just asking for a little flexibility because it's not their fault that there are not tests available. Yes, we know that everyone knew about this mandate in October. But that's still, I do believe that the vast majority of our teachers and staff have tried to do what they needed to do to comply with this mandate. We're just asking for a little more time for the system to work itself out. And it is creating a morale problem within the school division. As you know, we are working very hard, working extremely hard to keep our classrooms open for children in our schools. That, the VDH as well as the CDC, that was the first thing we heard from Lori Verlano when we had a meeting with her recently, superintendents. We need to keep children in school as much as possible as long as we can do so safely, and we take that very, very seriously. But in order to do that, we have to have the capacity to have classroom instruction, and that means we need teachers. So if this buys us a little more time to make sure that our teachers can get vaccinated or be tested, we are requesting that. Because again, in-person instruction, as you all know, is the best. And as we've demonstrated before, if we need to close down a class, we will do it and have done it. We will close down grade levels. We've done that and will continue to do so. And if there's a need to close a school, we will do that. But we have to have the staff to operate our buildings safely. And it is not the fault of the teachers at this time that they don't have access to testing. So we're just asking for a little bit of grace.
Yeah. Dr. Birdsong, go ahead, Ms. Bassin, and then Ms. Camson.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, and thank you for the comments that you made. There's, in those comments, I see two different, two sets of information that are obviously interrelated. But first, to talk about the testing, I agree, you know, we put this mandate in place, and obviously, currently, the infrastructure to adhere to that mandate is challenged. I do think opportunities for testing are going to expand in the coming weeks as, also as we peak, and maybe the demand hopefully goes down. But certainly, as you said, vaccination is key to overcoming this virus. Testing is also extremely an important part of that layered strategy. And right now, I think we're challenged. I think all of us have also had our personal experiences with trying to get testing and know what that's like. So I do support flexibility as it concerns testing. I do, you know, the other comments that you made about keeping our schools open, I do, you know, as you know, I've been eager to get an update about where we are with staffing. And Mr. Billups, if I'm not mistaken, I think every, every day, there's a daily report that you receive about the student and staff absences. Is that correct?
We, yes, we have access to, you know, pull that information.
So is there anything that you can tell us about, like, do you feel like, do you, and Dr. Birdsong, feel like we have the operational capacity to keep our schools open in a way that's meaningful and equitable across the district right now?
I'll answer that. I need to reiterate to the board. If I feel the need to close a classroom, I will. We're going to keep our students safe and our staff safe, first and foremost. If there's a need to close down a classroom, a grade level, we have done that. We have not closed down a school at this point because there hasn't been the need to do so. There are a variety of variables that we look at, and I shared that with the board recently. We're looking at certainly staff capacity. You cannot operate a school safely if you don't have the staff there. So if there's ever an instance whereby we don't have the staff to safely open up a school, operate the school, provide effective instruction, we're going to close the school down. We're also looking at other things as well. We're looking at, you know, mitigation strategies and how effectively they're being implemented. We're looking at staff absences, student absences, outbreaks. Well, first and foremost, we're working very closely with our VDH colleagues. They are the practicing medical experts, and we depend on them for their expertise. They have access to data on a daily basis, they have access to research, and they share that with us. So they're looking at the data with us. They're helping us to evaluate our situations as it relates to classrooms, grade levels, schools, and they have been awesome advisors. We could not do this work without them. So I want to assure the board that we will continue to monitor this very, very closely. And it may be tomorrow, we may end up closing the school, maybe not that quickly because we would know by now. But if not, we would alert the board. So you would not have to worry about, oh, we don't know what's going on. We're keeping the board informed along the way. We have just been very, very fortunate in that we have not have, we have not had to close a school. We know some other divisions, or at least one, has done so, and there may be others that will need to do so, and we may be in that position too. You know, when I said to the board, I think it was a few months back, it's not a matter of if, but probably when. And so we are prepared to pivot if we need to to virtual instruction. Our teachers are ready, our building principals are ready, and the administration is ready to do, to support doing so.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Thank you for those comments. So, you know, to be honest, you know, I.
Please be honest.
I mean, I, you know, and I, I don't mean to, you know, I feel like, I know I've sent a lot of emails in the last couple of weeks about wanting to know more information, wanting to have the data so that we can have informed discussions about what we do next. Because like you said, like, the board, the board is ultimately held accountable for the decisions that are made. And so with that, you know, I'm in trust and verify mode. And with that, you know, we have the dashboard. I think the dashboard is, obviously, there's a delay in the numbers that are there, which isn't with all dashboards. But what it doesn't, it doesn't tell us a lot of key pieces of information around staffing. You know, how many, how many staff members do we have in quarantine? How many students do we have in quarantine? And, and I think that's important information for us to monitor. Every day, and I'm telling you, I'm nonstop getting messages from people about the number of children, the number of staff that are out of the school buildings and what is being done. I have children in the school system, and so do many, some of you, where every day, that level of uncertainty among them and their peers, mostly, you know, I'm worried about the students as a whole, the uncertainty every day about their risk of exposure and what that does to their learning environment is, is really, it's, it is, yes, it's in person, but the learning, I'm very concerned about what is happening in our school buildings just based on the volume of calls that I get every single day for the past several weeks. And so I'm trying to balance what I hear with the data, and without having the data, I'm having a hard time. I don't feel comfortable at night when I go to sleep thinking that the next day is going to be a good learning environment for our students. And I'm mostly concerned about those schools and neighborhoods that have already experienced the wrath of this virus. So I need some, I need some data. I need more frequent reporting. I need, I need more information so that we can make the best decisions for our students so that we can keep them in school. And so I don't know what that looks like, but I wanted to have that discussion because our nurses are overworked. It's almost to the point where I hear contact tracing is almost impossible. And, you know, you talk about, can we effectively upkeep with our mitigation strategies? You know, I just, I'm very concerned about that, and.
I just want to say.
I don't know what the solution is.
Because, so if we, if we, if there was a daily tally of how many teachers are out, I'm just not sure how useful that information is to the board because Dr. Birdsong and her team are not making decisions based on just that data point. So.
But, so if I can explain, so VDH, what VDH and CDC has asked, you know, as a guide point, they've used the school, level of school impact, which includes student absenteeism, includes staffing shortage, it includes transmission in schools. So those are things that we should be able to look at, and a parent should be able to look at and assess their own level of comfort and their own level of, you know, risk-taking that they're willing to take. Are we at a low level? Are we at a medium level? Are we at a high level? Those are the categories that they have outlined in that guidance. So those are things that I feel like we should be monitoring as a board. I mean, I'm very uncomfortable not knowing what that is on a school-by-school basis.
Well, isn't the level of COVID that's in our community also in our schools? I mean, isn't it reflective in our schools of what's in the community?
I mean, but we know as a whole, as a city, but in the school-by-school impact is going to be different, and that impact includes staffing. So we don't know right now, does, you know, Booker T. have 100% of their staff in place? You know, what is, what is the impact? We don't know what that is. And what is it at Larry Moore? We don't know at the individual schools what the level of impact is.
This is my, but the thing is, is that it's being monitored by our administration. I just, and we are also mandated to provide in-person learning. So I just don't understand how it'd be valuable other than, I feel better, I feel worse. But there's no real context there to offer the public. If, if we're putting data on our website, I mean, to, I just, I'm just thinking about also about the amount of work that would go into putting information out there that really, I don't see how it would be very useful to people. Are they going to decide not to, so say, the administration's keeping the school open, school A, and there's 50% of the teachers out, but they've come up with, you know, a tiered strategy on how to make that work and still provide in-person instruction. Is a parent going to say, well, just because 50% are gone of the teachers are out for a temporary amount of time, I'm going to pull my kid out? I mean, I just, I'm not sure what that decision would be.
That's already happening. I mean, that's already happening at some of our schools. You know, some, some kids haven't had their permanent teacher. I mean, we heard that the other night at the Norfolk Council PTA meeting. Some haven't seen their teacher in a very long time. So that's already occurring in our school buildings. I'm trying to get a sense of what is the extent that that is occurring. And I know we've been, we've been utilizing all kinds of resources, and I appreciate the effort that the administration has put forward finding substitutes, then substitutes for those substitutes, and really, you know, I mean, it's been an amazing feat. I get that, but we have to, there are exceptions to the bill where we're required to provide in-person learning. And I think that's a piece that is also getting lost in this. piece that is also getting lost in this conversation. There are exceptions to that. And we have to look at that and see, are we at a point, like, right now, I feel like we are, we are rising that peak right now. Could this be a time, I mean, Centerra, CHKD just put out, they're, they're not doing elective surgeries anymore. They are, they are at max capacity with trying to manage all of this. And I feel like we could be doing something as a school system and as a city, but right now, we are in charge of governing our school system. So what I, I'm asking these questions so that we can make a data-informed decision about, can we do this? Because we are ultimately, as a board, going to be responsible for that.
But we've given the, Dr. Birdsong's in charge of operations of schools and is monitoring this. I think she's done an outstanding stellar job of monitoring and managing this entire pandemic. And I'm so proud to be a part of public schools for this. I mean, for this and many other reasons, I'm just so delighted. But anyways, I, I just, I just, I'm having trouble because if there's something that, if there's something that we need to take action on, it needs to come from the superintendent. She needs to make the recommendation that a policy has changed, that, you know, let us know the school's shut down. That's on her. It's really, I'm not seeing how that's a governance decision.
Well, and I, I respect that, but ultimately, you know, they, the superintendent makes the recommendation, and then we ultimately make that decision. And just as we're hearing about the board, the vaccine mandate, it is the board, the board, we are the ones that, that, in all the communication going out there, it's the board's mandate. Closing a school will be the board's responsibility. So if we are-
The operations responsibility.
To me, that's not what the board requires, to me.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what people think, though.
Is there a time to educate them on the role of the board and the role of the administration in that that is a decision that Dr. Birdsong will-
So if you, so if, so, okay, so that's a good, so let's segue into that. So if Dr. Birdsong tomorrow feels that, you know, as a division, every single school has a high level of impact based on the various variables, you have the authority to close the school system, let's say, for X number of days for, because it allows for a temporary closure without the board's approval. Is that correct?
That was the decision of the board to give me that authority.
Okay.
And with the closure, that means no instruction, correct?
Pardon?
When we say closure, are we talking about no instruction or virtual?
Oh, absolutely. We will have instructions.
Virtual instruction.
So with that, because I think it just really teaches another thing, and I know there are many people who are watching this. When we talk, because there's so much misinformation about a state bill that mandated that we had to provide in-person learning, this board long was opposed to that in our last legislative, in that special session, that it took away the authority of the local school division to make that determination, like we did when we came back and we all voted to go virtual 100%. That's come back many times. People have asked, why can't we go back 100% virtual? Well, our hands are tied. We can't do that. And I think our superintendents mentioned that, that this board also gave her the authority, based on this new law here, to make the operational decisions, so that we're not calling back in for special meetings to determine whether or not kids are wearing masks or not, back and forth. So we're not having a circus show. This is an operational issue, and that's why we've given the authority for the superintendent to do that. But I think going back from my understanding here, Ms. Bassin, is, has it gotten towards a particular point where we need to, you know, close down every school? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah. And to be clear, I was not at all saying no instruction. I was assuming transition to virtual.
No, no, no. I'm just clarifying. All I'm trying to do is get clarity here. So if we were to shut down, if you felt that we were at a particular point and we needed to shut down, what is the limitation on the shutdown? Because we can't just shut down and go virtual for the remainder of the school year, right?
No, not for the school.
So what's the limitation on that?
We have 10 days.
Right.
We have 10 instructional days, unscheduled instructional days, that, meaning they can't already be in the calendar, that we can go remote.
That we could go remote 100%, all of our schools, 10 days.
Up to 10 days.
Virtual learning, yep.
For virtual learning.
And anything beyond that, we would have to get approval from the state superintendent.
Got it. So with that, right now, Dr. Birdsong, your team has been monitoring this. You're getting the information, and your determination is that right now, we're still in a state of classroom by classroom, school by buil-, building by building phase.
You're exactly right. Again, we have closed classes. We have closed grade levels. We have not yet closed a school. But if we need to, I will close a school, and I certainly will inform the board of that. And certainly, there will be communication with the parents that are being impacted by that, so they will know how they can access instruction for their children. Just because we're physically closed, teachers will still be working remotely to provide virtual instruction for our children, and our teachers are ready to do that.
So just for the clarity in that, and I'll shut up here for a moment. If you feel, based on the data and information that you're receiving as our operational team, you will make that call, and you will inform the board-
Absolutely.
-that this is the call that we need to make, and because we've given you that authority, so we don't have to call a special meeting or anything like that to deliberate around that, that you're, every day, looking at that information, you state it with, with the health experts and everyone else to make those determinations. And so, just so everyone is clear on it, if it gets to a particular point, you will make that determination and come back to the board. But right now, we are still at a classroom by classroom, school by school, in, in that determination. I, I can understand wanting to know the data. I, I can understand and wanting to know what classrooms, what schools. Trust me, I think everyone around this table, heck, I got a call two, two, three hours ago, that impacted close to home for me about what's going on in our schools there. But what power and authority do I have as an individual board member, other than what I have collectively done with my colleagues, to give the authority through the superintendent to make that determination? I can't go in and shut down. That's not my job. I can't shut down a classroom. I can't shut down a school.
I'm not suggesting that you do.
But at the end of the day, I can hold the superintendent, because she's the one employee that this governance team has the responsibility, accountable for what happens there. And so I'm asking these pertinent questions to say that, for the community understanding, for my colleagues, is, we've got a person who's, who's being held responsible for it. It's a lot of pressure. You think about the number of kids that we have in this division, every staff member that's in there. We're not the only school division that's going through this. We're, and this is not an isolated issue in Norfolk at all.
It's worldwide.
It's worldwide. But I mean, but I'm just saying, I understand, because I get the same calls, I get the same thing. We've, we all got it. But the superintendent came to us today. This board made a decision about the mandate, and she did just that. She came to us and said, can you give us some grace? Because this is what we're feeling. This is what her HR department's telling her and her staff members, that if we can do this, we can work to help with morale, we can work, because people are working towards that. That's the information that we need, that we can come together collectively as a board and make a decision on. So if there's any conversation in this right now, it's taking up the recommendation from the superintendent regarding the extension of the date. That's the action that we can take here today.
Right.
That's, that's my opinion.
Ms., thank you. Mr. Clayton, Ms. Campson had her hand up, and then Dr. Gabriel. So Ms. Campson, do you still have some, a question, or?
Well, I did have a question, but apparently Dr. Birdsong now reads minds. And my, and my question was about, because I was all getting a lot of, of contact about the situation with people that missed the deadline, and yes, they could have done it in the fall, but, you know, as it comes up, then you, not everyone does things way ahead. And, and so-
But you can't, though, right, with the testing?
There's plenty of tests back then.
Because you need to, well, I mean, with the testing, you wait until, was it 72 hours and prior to the, you know?
Yes, and there's also a timeframe that they will, yes.
Yeah.
But at any rate, I had a concern about people that were sending information, that they were having trouble, as, as Dr. Birdsong said. And so that was simply my question, and apparently she already had, she'd already acted on it before I asked.
Okay. All right. Dr. Gabriel?
Thanks, Dr. Martin. And just to remind everyone, I, I did share with you all that I do have to leave for another meeting at the hospital to discuss this very issue. I want to say thank you to Dr. Birdsong and her staff, everyone that's here present, and everyone that is tuning in, watching, working every day. Your words earlier mean a lot to me as a board member, but more so as a parent and someone who was working literally 24 hours a day in trying to keep our children safe. As a parent, my expectation is that my child go to school and come back to me safe. I know the level of instruction is not going to be what every teacher desires. I know that there are going to be technology glitches. I know that a nurse is trying to make phone calls from the second she walks in the building to the second she leaves. It's not just the nurse. It's probably five of her friends and the principal. I'm doing the same thing. And you get email, voicemails, wrong numbers, all kinds of things. But I have to take a step back and say, what is the objective? What is our objective here? It is the safety and the well-being of our students. And if we can give them a good quality education during this time, I, I hope we can do that. And that's our goal. But right now, we have to make it out of this alive. That's what we have to do. Everybody is stressed right now. Everybody. Who would have thought we would be, every, every wave that comes through the peak gets higher and higher. And we don't know what is going to come next, but we know that, from the data that we have received, that we have some mitigation strategies in place. Vaccinations do help to decrease death rate, morbidity, all of that. We still have children in our buildings who are not vaccinated at all, our precious little four-year-olds and under. So I have to, I, I'm so sorry that I'm not going to be a part of the further conversations, but I do have to go. But I thank you and your team, and you have my support for the flexibility and the grace. I'm going to put a little bug in your ear with regards to the testing, though. If you test positive, for the people who have to go back and retest, their tests may still come back positive, up to 90 days.
Right.
So we might have to come back and think about, again, what we need to do in that instance. So I, I really appreciate the discussion, and I thank you for your leadership and your entire staff.
And I thank my team, because you're right. You said you're working 24 hours. Believe me, these, these people are working, we're all working 24 hours.
And I mean, we have to-
And again, the safety and security of our staff and children is of utmost importance to us, and we do not take that lightly.
And working 24 hours against circumstances that are beyond any of our control, mostly.
Right.
So, but thank you, everyone. Did you have something else to add, Ms. Bassin?
I was just going to add that, as we sit here, selected officials as representatives of our community, I think it's important to bring the concerns that we are hearing forward. And while we may not be making this decision, I'm telling you, every, there's so many people in the building that are, that are not okay right now. From principals to nurses, they're, they're, you know, and that's, that's the concern that I'm bringing forward. And I hope you will take it in consideration as you make the decision, and that we have a good framework for getting input from our principals, APs, nurses, you know, those on the front lines that are dealing with this. I know we have, you know, the leadership is doing that, but, you know, whatever we need to do, like Dr. Gabriel said, you know, what's the objective? Is, is a high-quality education for our students, and that's, that's the ultimate goal. So.
Go ahead, Dr. Austin.
I was just going to add one comment, because there's also a twist to this also. There's preliminary data that says that certain populations are actually better off in school from getting the virus, and of course, the academic part, because if they are subjected to remote learning at home, a lot of them are unsupervised, and they're out and about, and they're at each other's houses, and they're having parties. So it's a lot of stuff going on that kind of states, actually, children, young children, and even teenagers are safer in schools than being at home, even doing remote learning in this process. There's some populations that are much better off in a more structured, very confined kind of setting. So I think we have to look at that part also. I think that's kind of critical, that they may actually be safer in school than being at home doing remote learning as it relates to the virus and other issues. So that's, that's something-
Absolutely.
-that we have to look at really closely.
Right. And I don't disagree at all, but like you said, key word there was data, right?
Yeah.
And so, just a game.
Okay. So, and as far, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
... to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 or submit to weekly testing. That's something that the administration supports, right? When we discussed it, it was, so it was collective discussion around that, that decision. The second thing, on the slide, I guess it's slide two, board mandate and associated progressive discipline. I think it was on, at the December 1st presentation, we were at Southside STEM, where the recommendations were put forward in a presentation for the board to consider. We never took any action on it on December 15th, but the recommendations, as I understand it, that you've listed here from the December 1st meeting, is what, according to this, is what's being implemented, correct?
Correct.
So it was on the first that, that we received this presentation, and, and in the absence of any board action, you've gone forward with the sense of the board's support of the, the violation process, correct?
I can, I can address that, Mr. Jordan. I recall during that meeting, there was a question about, are you asking the board to take any action? And we actually did, were not requesting the board to take any action, because it was clarified for us that whatever we did administratively, we could move forward with. And I don't know if recommendations was really the correct terminology, but we wanted to provide the board with a sense of, this is what progressive discipline looks like. So we wanted to share with you what we had planned to do operationally to address individuals who did not adhere to the board's mandate.
Yeah, and I want-
So recommendation, and it's probably not the most appropriate term, but we did clarify that we were not asking the board to take any action on anything we presented. We just wanted to present the process as requested and provide you the data around what we would be facing as it relates to unvaccinated staff versus vaccinated staff versus who wanted a medical exemption or religious exemption, et cetera.
Yeah. And I just want to, and I'm not, I don't have any objection to the progressive process, but what is important to me, and we talked about it in that meeting, and we often talk about it at these meetings, is, you know, when it's clear when we're being asked to do something that's actionable and not. And so I just recall recommending that we be clear on what we were doing there, so that, so that we do. But because the presentation mentioned December 15th, I just knew that wasn't the case, and I just wanted to be clear that we're doing exactly what, what Dr. Birdsong just described. Now, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the, the report. So the slide that, I guess it was slide eight. So can you redefine again what out of compliance means? Because there's the weekly testing that we were requiring of individuals who were not vaccinated, correct?
I'm sorry. Repeat the question.
The weekly testing is for individuals that are not fully vaccinated, correct?
Yes, they're not, they're not, they have not submitted a, a evidence of full vaccination.
Right. So then, I think there was one slide that was showing us who has not given or provided documentation for whether or not they're fully vaccinated or not. Then there's a slide for individuals who've indicated they're not going to be vaccinated, but they're willing to submit the testing, and then there are individuals that say they're not doing anything. So, is that correct?
Yes.
So on the slide where it says out of compliance, we are grouping, can you, can you redefine for me who falls into the out of compliance category on the slide that you have on, on slide eight?
Yes. Basically, anyone is out of compliance if they, one, have not submitted a vaccination card that indicates full vaccination, two, in this situation from last week, they did not or were not able to comport with submitting the weekly testing results by 11:59 PM last Wednesday. Then others who may not have told us anything- Then others who may not have told us anything automatically while this process is, is ensuing, we put them in the weekly testing category such that they would have been still given opportunities to be able to comport with the mandate. So that, that, that 559 would be comprised of any of those individuals. And unless and until it got to a point where if this were to continue, then we would be able to look back on our data and say, even though you may not have responded, even though you may have asked for a religious or medical exemption, but then didn't turn the forms all in or complete it, we still put you in this category so that if we had to go back and look at in totality what they have done since the first day that the survey came out in which they were given opportunities, we could recreate that because we would need all of that data on any individual if we were going to bring forth any type of termination or discipline. We would need to be able to show, or would be in our best interest to be able to show all the things that we had done in order to try to get our employees to comply.
Right. And what I, I guess what I'm asking for is, I'm not interested in trying to be privy to all the stuff you have to deal with day to day. But on this slide where it says out of compliance, at least for me, I think would be helpful as a board member to be able to see under the out of compliance, who it is, how many are in the not fully vaccinated category, what the categories are. Because once everybody gets rolled up, when I'm going back trying to look at your previous information, and in this slide, I don't know how to calculate the 559 that you have for out of compliance with the, some of the data points that you had in the, on the previous slides. So I think would be helpful for us, I think from a board, at least for me, when you show out of compliance, we can, we can delineate who it is that's in the, in the different categories versus rolling them, rolling them up. And, and then the, in terms of the flexibility, I'm supportive of the flexibility. I would also say that I think that flexibility should extend to the, to the violations that we have. So someone who is simply not doing anything, to me, is in a different category than someone that we know is trying to comply, but because of lack of testing, because of results not getting in by Wednesday at 11:59, that if we're putting, giving letters of concern, that we also be flexible in terms of making sure that, to the extent that it's possible, that we are distinguishing between or withdrawing if we are providing flexibility for those individuals that are doing everything they can to do the right thing versus someone who who may not. So I'm supportive of the flexibility, but I also think that needs to apply to, to the, to the notices that we're given so that makes sure that we are being parallel where that's concerned. Okay, you don't understand what I'm saying?
No, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but I believe that that's our intent. That's why we're giving any, any individual who has not done what they should have done based on the mandate or even has not responded, we are still including them in the group with, with the testing. And anyone, if this were to continue, or as this continues, as I said, anyone who we would then look at imparting any type of discipline on them, we're going to have to review their, their entire walk with this whole process to make sure that we did not have any missteps or do anything that we should not have done with regards to that individual. But the, but the most equitable and fair thing to do, which is what we're doing, is still putting individuals in that testing group because that's the group that based on lack, how we had been proceeding, where the, the discipline progression would actually start.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting anything about taking anybody out of the testing group. What I'm saying is if you, you send me a letter because I have not met the criteria, so I get a warning, but you know that I am following through, I've gone to try to get a test, I couldn't get the test schedule, I'm waiting on the data to come back, that's, you know I'm doing that. So what you are saying to me may be a little different than somebody who's not doing anything. So I'm saying that in your consideration of warnings and flexibility, that you also consider to the individual that receives a letter of warning and they feel like they're doing everything that they can, that, that we're showing that grace that was mentioned earlier, that we understand, we're sending you this letter of warning, but we want you to understand that we know you are putting forth every effort, which is very different from those that you know may not be, is the point that I'm saying, that in the same way you're recommending to us that there be flexibility and grace, I'm suggesting that you also consider that as you are communicating with, with individuals. So it's not a blanket, you're just out of compliance. You know, you're out of compliance, but we know you're trying to do the right thing versus you're out of compliance and we haven't heard a word from you.
And these results that you're seeing are as a result of just the first week of trying to implement this in which we were only able to operate with what was in our scope of ability and responsibility, which is what the mandate said. We certainly did not, we certainly purposefully did not want to begin subjectively looking at individuals to say, well, because you turned in this letter on this date with an explanation, but this person we never heard from at all, we just did not have that authority, so therefore we did not implement anything like that. But we are certainly open to whatever we need to do to try to be as fair and as equitable to all of our employees. I do believe that if we were to do anything subjectively, such as look at this person differently because they submitted something versus this one who didn't submit something versus this other person who didn't give an explanation, I think that that would cause us more problems to try to do it that way. So on behalf of our employees, I do support, because we do, we've had a number of employees, you know, that have called us, I personally have spoken to a number of them about their efforts that they've tried to get in and all of that, and we've heard their, their, their plea. But again, I knew that we did not have the authority to then say, okay, well, because you're telling me you tried and you, you can send me this, I just knew that it would not have been appropriate last week for this first round of results for me to authorize any type of decisions. Again, I'm thinking that that's the purpose of this discussion right now, that the board will come up with whatever it is that you want us to do, and we will move forward accordingly. I will say too, just as you're considering this, considering making some type of change or edit, that, like I said, we've heard from many, many employees, and many of them have complied. And interestingly, also a data point that we discovered is that once some people got a letter of concern, we've received upwards of 50 to 60 vaccination cards. They had already taken the vaccination, but they just didn't send it in for whatever that reason was, forgot, didn't want to be bothered with it, or in a couple of cases, they even told, we just wanted to see what was going to happen. So that's interesting as well, how that even played out. So the numbers that you're actually seeing based upon the report that you got on Friday, I have evidence today as we pull current data, that they're actually improving. So that-
Well, I think that was our intent. And I, I just want to make sure. I'm, I'm, I, I closed on, you answered my questions on the numbers, on the, on the, the charts. We were having the discussion around, recommendations around grace and flexibility. I'm sharing some thoughts for you all to consider in, in that regard. That, that's where I'm going with, with that piece of it, and I'm close with that. But I don't want to seem like I'm having some debate with you about the chart, I'm not. I'm just simply saying that if we're being asked to consider grace and flexibility, which I support, I was just putting forward some other places where I thought we might be able to consider some grace and flexibility.
I think you're very clear on that when you said it before.
Ultimately, you'll have to make that determination.
Yeah.
And, and then I have one, one final question that came up in the earlier discussion because I can't, y'all are way too, oh, more, far more advanced in this than I am. But the, the resolution that we had around testing and what it authorized, you all were having this conversation around school closures and classroom closures and all of that, that's, you're having a separate discussion from the testing resolution, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So the resolution that you all are referencing in terms of what we've given the superintendent authorization to do and so forth, can you just send that? Because I was, to me, the presentation was about the testing piece, and we started having conversations around closure, and just so I'm clear, and Dr. Rousen is new, just to make sure that I have a good understanding of what we have authorized.
Mr. Jordan, I can email that to you.
Yeah.
Because I also yesterday was looking at it.
Okay.
Just to refresh my-
The resolution?
Yeah, just, just, just so we're clear on, because again, to me, the focus of the presentation was on the testing piece, and then when we started having the discussion around the closure piece, I wasn't following all that. But I think it'd just be helpful for everybody to just be clear on exactly where we are.
I'll send a copy of it all for you.
Thank you, Mr. Cloud. So going back, though, is there anyone that opposes giving it's only about three and a half more weeks till February 9th to work out the kinks in the testing and vaccination process?
No, I, I personally don't have any objection. I would also ask, you know, from time to time, I see these messages coming from different school divisions that are providing support for testing. And then we talked about this earlier, whether or not the school division had resources to support testing for, for employees. I would still encourage if there's something out there, some model, that they could also help us in supporting testing, whether it's onsite, providing kits, whatever it is, I don't know the supply chain and all that kind of stuff. But if, if there's some way that other school divisions have found some way of doing it that we can improve upon, I would just encourage us to, to be open to that as well.
Absolutely, yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, thank you.
Pull this back again. Next, we have the updates from the governor's proposed budget, remembering. Okay. Mr. Jenkins, welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Clayton, Dr. Bursong, and members of the board. Today, let's see, Karen, you pulling up on it? Thank you.
Everyone had an opportunity to look this over before the meeting, right?
It was supposed to be here.
What's that?
That, an indication that you want him to-
Yeah, I think that if you can just roll through it a little bit quickly.
We'll, we'll go through very quickly.
Just a wait. I'm just using it.
Maybe.
I feel like it's getting drawn out really. Going through a law a little bit.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to talk about the governor's budget, the proposals that he put forward. We'll also talk a bit about the Norfolk revenue sharing formula and the budget process and timelines. And in December, Governor Northam released a proposed budget for the Commonwealth for the years beginning, the year beginning, actually, two years beginning July 1st. As we're all aware, the Governor-elect Duncan will take play, take office on Saturday. The General Assembly was to begin, begin its 22 session today with control of one house changing. I bring this up because the incoming governor and the General Assembly very likely will make changes to the governor's budget. For now, however, we're working with Governor Northam's recommendations. Based on these recommendations, we can, Norfolk Public School could expect to receive $16.2 million more in operating revenue than we're receiving from the Commonwealth this year. This estimate is based on student, student projections from the Department of Education. It is showing a reduction of 736 students from the current, the current budget year, not actually the number of students, but that the number that we had projected. We are expecting $6.1 million for a 5% teacher pay raise. You'll recall that the governor has proposed a 10% over two years, 5% in each year. $5.1 million reduction from the removal of a harm, a hold harmless provision in the fiscal '22 budget. You'll recall that there was a dip in student membership and that the state held us harmless. So that was removed. There's a $4.5 million for, based on improved sales tax collections, that is the next year's budget. And there's an addition of $10.7 million of at-risk funds. This is almost a 90% increase in the allocation in that account. We also see a $2.2 million increase in the early reading intervention, and this is up by 229%, so almost three times as much money coming in as the current year, or excuse me, two times. There's also $10.6 million for school construction. This is new. We would recommend that these funds be placed in the capital budget and used to further our building construction program. There's a $780,000 hold harmless provision related to the elimination, the governor has recommended the elimination of sales taxes on groceries. This would hold us harmless because part of our revenue is coming from sales taxes. Governor Northam did not make a recommendation to change the VRS rates that we're currently pay, paying, in spite of the fact that the board of trustees recommended rates that are 2% lower than what we're paying now. We do expect that the general, we can expect the General Assembly would change that because it would save both money to the state and to us. And there's also a hold harmless provision, $3.76 million. It's related to reduction in, in spending during the years of the pandemic. The state looks at our, our past spending in order to project how much they will fund us in the future. We had a large dip because of the pandemic. There's also money, a reduction in special education tuition reimbursements of $1,770,000. That's related to a change in policies related to who the state will reimburse. So the governor's recommendations are also based on enrollment projections from the Department of Ed, which we usually use in producing our budget. I will say that the projections that the Department of Ed is, has, are a bit higher than our, our internally generated projections. So we still, I will need to discuss with the, the administration on what we need to do there. But just bear in mind, these projections are based on the state's estimates of students. The Commonwealth's Bino process starts with the governor recommending a budget, which he did in December. It then goes to the General Assembly. Each house of the assembly will consider the governor's recommendations along with amendments of its members and probably reversions of the incoming governor. In February, separate budget bills will emerge from each legislative house, which will then go to a joint conference comprised of members from the Senate and the House delegates. The conference committee will reconcile, excuse me, it'll then be voted by the two houses, it goes to conference, the committee will reconcile the two bills and recommend budget for each house to consider. Once the house approves, or both houses approve, it goes to the governor for signature or consideration. The governor can sign, change, or veto. So in a nutshell, that will all take place between now and, in March. We, we must send our budget to the city April 1st. City Council will hold a public hearing, consider funding in, at its May meeting. A little bit about the local revenue allocation policy. This policy was adopted in May of 2018. It governs the amount of local revenue or city revenue that the city, that the city sends to the schools. We get just under 30% of the non-dedicated local taxes that are coming from the list that's before you. I won't read those, but you can see them. Under the policy, we receive funding estimates for the upcoming year. We, we receive the first estimates in the fall. We will receive updated estimates in February and March. The city staff would also communicate to us if there are shortfalls, if they, if they feel that there will be less revenue than was projected. There is a true-up at the end of the year. There is a true-up at the end of the year. If we receive, if the city receives more revenue than they had projected, it means that there is more revenue that would be made available to the school district. That is generally settled through a true-up that happens at the end of the year or after the year closes. Those, that true-up, along with any funds that we don't spend, would be retained and made available to the school division upon request. You can, the school board can request an increase in the allocation, but it must also support an increase in the real estate tax rate. And finally, the, the allocation policy is a city policy, and it can make, it can be changed by City Council at its discretion. The city revenue formula, again, this is, the policy was put in place in 2018. Fiscal 2020 was the first year. The budget estimate was 126 million. That was the year of the pandemic, so we came in a little low, a little lower than was the original estimate. The city had told us to cut back, and we did. For fiscal '21, that was last year, the original estimate pre-COVID was 229 million. That was reduced to 121 million because of COVID. But the final allocation was very close to the original estimate, which means that there's, there's money that's available, that the city is, has held, but will make available to us in the future. The budget estimates for this current year fiscal '22 are 129.6 million, and they are projecting a $5 million increase in fiscal 2023 next year. This is a, these are the drivers that are in the revenue sharing formula. Real estate taxes, we current, or in fiscal 2021, again, that was last year, 239 and a half million. They projected a 3.3% increase in fiscal '22 and a 3.5% increase next year. You see other taxes, personal property, sales taxes, food and beverages, business licenses. Those four or five categories, actually, they had projected less money in this year than the estimates for last, last year. And all of, much of this are, I'd say, all of it is related to the pandemic. But you also saw that revenue came in stronger in fiscal '21 than was, than it was expected. So you see that in fiscal '23, they are showing, this day, the city is showing healthy increases in all of those accounts, property, personal property taxes, sales, food and beverages, and licenses. So we are expecting an increase in revenue from those categories. Communications and utilities, it's been kind of wavering around. There's a projection for next year that will be down 4%. Other taxes dropped 9% in '22, but are expected to go up next year. So the total revenue base for, on which our shares determine, this climbed 0.4% in '22 and 3.9% is projected in next year. As far as our budget, the next steps in January, today, the, the leadership team is meeting, will be meeting, this month will be meeting to make, to finalize recommendations that will be coming to you in March. Superintendent will release her budget in early March. You will hold budget work sessions, or you're scheduled to. Public hearing must be held before you can vote. And again, your action is necessary so that your budget can be sent to City Council by the 1st of April. I believe that concludes my, well, let's see, April 1st is the deadline, and then in May, Council will take action. And I believe that concludes my comments. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
All right. I don't know if it's a question, but on the slide where you were identifying requires the local match, you had two, two asterisks there, and I think it was at 44%. That was for both of those categories combined?
Oh, beg your pardon. Let me see if I can find it. There are provisions, yes, there are provisions in the governor's budget that require that the, that local match, there's a local match to federal, excuse me, state funds. Practically all the money that we received from the state requires a local match, practically all, not, not all, but almost all. So the early reading intervention, that's going up $2.2 million. We would have to match that by 44%, which is, I think, 800 and some, about $900,000. The $10.7 million of that risk does require a local match of 44%, which is about four and a half, a little over four and a half million.
And then with the proposed teacher salary increase, the state is providing half, and expectation is that the local community has to come up with the other half in order for that to occur.
Right, and that one's a little touchy because the 5%, the state's going to cover 70% of that pay raise for the positions that are in the state's funding formula. There are positions that are not in that funding formula, and we would be responsible, the locality is responsible.
Yeah, and that's why I'm raising it, because I think it's important, because every year, at the state level, there's always the pledges about, we're going to raise teacher pay. Then it goes out, okay, everybody's going to get a 10% pay raise. One, they don't provide for everybody, and so I just think it's very important through our discussions that we are clear about, because ultimately, you know, traditionally, we try to take care of everybody. And so that's where the burden is often placed, on the locality, to try to, to compete. And so I just think if, in future presentations, if we're able to kind of highlight that as well, so that through our discussions, we are really setting what the expectation is from the local community in terms of meeting the pay raise and, and these other items that you identified that, that require that, that local contribution. And my last thing, at the public hearing presentation, we had a budget timeline, and I would like to request that we have at least one school board work session on the budget in February, whether we tied to the retreat. I think it, you know, we started off from last year with the intent of trying to align our budget efforts with our goals and our guardrails and our students' performance and so forth. So we're kind of off that track. So I think it would be good in February, at least if we could have some type of board discussion or work session about where we are in terms of the, the budget that the superintendent is putting together for us, any priorities or outcomes that we are targeting, and I also think would be helpful with Dr. Rousen joining us for us to, to do that as, as well, rather than not having any real school board budget discussion until, until March, and then be pressed around trying to pass the budget in time for, for April.
So because we haven't adopted our goals and guardrails, what I'm hearing you say is you want to push that further so that we can then have a discussion around budgeting that aligns with our priorities?
No, I'm saying that we, we, all I'm asking is, is that we have a budget work session with the board so that we are clear on what we're doing. What is it that we're prioritizing? So it is true, we did not complete the goals and guardrails, but we also have existing goals and priorities and data and so forth. And so I think it has been our commitment and that we did agree that we were trying to be student outcome focused. I don't think that's changed. So being able to have a sense of what's being prepared and how it can support student outcomes, how it can report retention, how it can support discipline in the, in the priorities that we've long established, I think is important, and it's an opportunity for us as we are resetting to just see where we are and how we're going to plan things moving forward.
The only thing that, wait, I'm sorry. So the only thing that I, I'm concerned about is that we have so much to get caught up on to meet our governance training deadline among our regular work and, you know, everything else, is that adding more time, if I'm understanding you correctly, adding more time to talk about the priorities to put in the budget before we even see Dr. Birdsong's proposed budget seems like not the best use of time to me. I think that we really need to focus on our norms and protocols and our, you know, our governance piece.
You're, you're, you're deciding what you think is of, of importance on the agenda.
We're having a discussion.
I know, and I'm, and I'm responding back to you, because I, I feel like I'm, words are being put in my mouth, so I want to make sure to try to clarify, because I think often what occurs is a suggestion comes forward, and then it's like, I'm trying to convince you of what I'm trying to say. I don't want to, I'm not, that's not what I'm trying to do. I think that there's, as we were working on our, you know, we can, we can streamline our meetings, but all I'm saying is, we're kind of in the state of, at least as this individual board member, I just want to be clear on where we are in terms of our priorities and goals, how the superintendent has interpreted our priorities and goals, and what direction we are headed in, in terms of the proposed budget that would come. And I think it is valuable to the board to have that discussion with the superintendent prior to March, rather than just waiting until March and then try to have that discussion later. So we just had a public hearing in December. We received some feedback. We just had extended conversations today about all kinds of things. We have extended conversations about other things. All I'm simply asking is that we include in our timeline a, a session to talk about where we are in the budget process and what goals and outcomes that we feel we are tying the proposed budget, the proposed budget. And I also think it's important, because I keep hearing rumors about the City Council coming and telling us what we should be doing with school construction and other things, and so I just think it's important for the board, who, part of our responsibility is approving the budget based upon the recommendation that we received from the superintendent, to have a, part of our agenda, to have a session where we can just make sure we're all on the same page. That's all.
Well, once, just, so going, so I'm not sure what you're hearing about City Council dictating what we're doing with our schools, because that is not anything that I have heard in any conversation.
Excellent.
In fact, it's actually been our administration advocating for what our schools need and not what the city thinks our schools need. So they've been working very collaboratively together, and I'm really happy that that relationship has been pretty smooth and that our administration has stood strong on the needs of our students and, and making sure that that's conveyed. So outside of that, I don't know of any, any way that they're making us do anything that hasn't been agreed to.
I mean, you know, it's all just, it's all just talk.
But the other thing is, and we, we talked, we've talked about this before, is my stance is, and I, I got away, I got away from this last year, Dr. Birdsong should know what our priorities are. If she doesn't, I'd be very shocked. And every year, she, she's shown that she does, and from what I, I'm, I'm not remembering otherwise, by giving us a budget that has been pretty spot-on. I mean, maybe there's some things here and there, but pretty spot-on with what our priorities have been. I don't believe that it's good practice for us to come up with priorities, tell her what they are, when she's running the district. I mean, how many, so you're in your third year, two and a half years now?
Thirty, 36.
But I mean, I'm just saying, like, it's superintendent. She knows what the priorities are. She knows where the money needs to go. So again, I'm trying to be very protective of our time and trying to, we have a lot of catch-up to do. I'm just, we will have the opportunity, once she gives us her draft, to go through it and have those discussions. I just don't understand why we'd have that before we see her draft.
The, it was not my intent to take up time having this debate or discussion. I, I think that the board has a responsibility. As a member of the board, I like to make sure that we are aligned. We have had a lot of discussions. We spent quite a bit of time earlier today talking about different perspectives on goals, guardrails, priorities. We talk about accountability, we talk about a whole bunch of things. All I'm asking is, I didn't say that to be a, a half a day event, but something that shows a crosswalk or alignment between where we were last year, what our student performance and whatever other indicators that we're monitoring are, what our proposed budget is, I mean, what we're looking at this year and how we're going to continue to, to excel. And I think that is within the responsibility of the board. I think that's good governance, and I also think it allows for additional transparent, collaborative communication to make sure that we are on the same page. I'm not saying for the superintendent to come and for us to dictate to her, but I am asking that we come together as a governor's team and collaborate and communicate and, and ensure that we are on the same page and that we are building upon the success from last year as we move towards greater success in the upcoming years. I don't see why that's problematic. I'm just asking for that as a point of consideration, and I think our norms and protocols allow for me to do that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, to point out that the board made a decision that gave direction to the superintendent this past summer to engage with city manager about funding structures, and that whatever presentation will be in, in alignment with that directive. Now, that was the will of the board, not everybody on this board voted for that, but that is the direction that we gave. I just want a direct question to ask the superintendent on this particular piece, when we talk about alignment and building this budget. You gave, just like what our chair spoke about, you presented, I thought, was a very good budget that was in alignment to what we still have in place that this board voted on, which is our accountability plan. There are some strategic goals that are in there, which I think are driver five, which you do internally, is aligned with. Is that the budget that you're presenting? And then also, I mean, I guess the framework that you're utilizing, because the board has voted on the accountability plan, we have not voted on and approved these goals and guardrails, we're still working through that, but we have three goals, if I'm not mistaken, that were aligned in there, and I think that that's what you've been building your budget on, you know? And of course, yes, we've had some other discussions and things like that regarding with the pandemic and so forth, but is that essentially the, what you're presenting to us, something that we'll continue to build upon that?
Essentially, essentially, yes.
And then, so based on the timeline, you'll present to us a draft, and then the board will have an opportunity to, to deliberate and talk about that.
Yes, we have scheduled a, a couple of work sessions after that presentation for you to provide feedback.
So we have that already built in there for us to provide feedback based on what you presented to us and what are the needs financially to be able to do the things for which we've already asked you to do.
Madam Chair.
Okay. So with that, I didn't interrupt, but what I'm asking, those things for clarity on that, is that we do have a timeline that's in place, and I think that the discussion, and honestly, I thought it came from some other members on the other side, asking us not to have this, because we come together with all these different things, and then we start putting stuff out there, and then we've been talking about, we had different requests and so forth, but that we allowed you to come back with the recommendation based on the things for which we've already established. So I don't agree with adding additional time. I honestly sometimes think that it's, we got a lot to get done, and we have to allow the individuals for which we've hired and put in place to do the job that they need to do and to bring recommendations, and for us to deliberate and discuss on those recommendations, and not for us to be cherry-picking and kind of walking things all down there. Until we have voted on and identified these goals and guardrails, we still have an accountability plan that's in place, and that, that's what the superintendent's working off of and those goals, and that's what we've seen in the budget book that anybody can go online and see right now. So I don't recommend taking any additional time outside of what we already have.
Dr. Martin, just, just again, we are, we received the presentation. Each and every time I bring up something, we go through this scenario where I bring something to the chair for consideration, then it has to go to the superintendent, superintendent has to say something back. Even the conversation, there's nothing in the school board's accountability plan about drive. drive for five. So, we, we-
I said the internal. I didn't say the accountability.
I'm talking about the board's role, right?
You have an accountability plan, that's-
I'm not asking, nor did I even bring up the superintendent getting involved, us getting involved with the superintendent's internal things. What I'm just asking for the board to do, which is what we're doing now, is to make sure that we are all clear. And so, what happens is, if I just say something about goals and guardrails, it goes in some direction, if I say something about the accountability plan, it goes in some direction. All I'm simply saying is, let's just be on the same page. And some of the things that we are behind on are our own doing, but the board has responsibility. The board hires and retains the superintendent, the board approves the budget, the board sets visions and values and goals and so forth. I think it is important, in all the conversation that we had earlier today about being collaborative and communicating, that we make sure that we are being collaborative and communicating as it relates to what is being done around the budget development process. And if there's no support for that, then so be it. But I think I have a right to bring that forward and that you take a moment to marinate on it rather than immediately trying to find some way to undercut what I'm saying. So, it is something that we've done in the past, it's something we can do in the future. We have some things that are being planned for the retreat. As an individual school board member, this is the opportunity that I get an opportunity to share with my colleagues some thoughts that I have. Otherwise, we don't have that opportunity on the agenda. It tied to the budget, and I just think it's something that we should consider as part of our newfound efforts around collaboration. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
I support that as well. I mean, and that was actually what I was going to ask for when I was looking at this one slide, that I noticed that that wasn't in there. And while we have the goals in the accountability plan, I agree, I mean, we've had so many different discussions, which I think if that doesn't demonstrate how all over the place we are, I don't know what does, but I do think we need to be on the same page. I think we have presented with data that we, that can help fine tune our priorities, and that is what I think the benefit of having that discussion as a board will allow. So, I support what Mr. Jordan is requesting.
I don't support a three-hour discussion amongst two individuals.
Nobody said, I don't think, I heard anything about-
No one said that at all.
I don't support a three-hour discussion amongst two individuals.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Bassin. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
So, up next is it the policy? I don't have it in front of me.
SRO.
Oh, yes, the SRO program. Sorry, my computer keeps running. Mr. Mallory, how are you tonight?
I'm fine. How's everybody? And Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Okay. Whenever you're ready, go ahead and begin.
Okay. Greetings, School Board Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Mr. Clanton, School Board Members and Dr. Birdsong. I'm Tim Mallory, Senior Public Safety Liaison and Senior Coordinator in Student Support Services. This evening, I'll be presenting the semi-annual review of the School Resource Officers Program. I'll share an introduction and overview of the evaluation process, responses from the SRO evaluation, public comments, and next steps. Following the presentation, I will be glad to answer questions during the discussion period. The School Resource Officers Evaluation is required by a Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, which establishes a mutual beneficial framework that both schools and law enforcement work within to achieve shared goals. The evaluations of the School Resource Officers are the responsibility of the city with input from building principals. The MOU requires an annual review of the SRO program by the school board with notice to the public as well as the opportunity for the public to provide input in the course of the review. Pursuant to Section 22.1-280.2, Section 3 of the Code of Virginia in 1950, there is an agreement there shall be a review once every two years. This evaluation was completed to ensure compliance to the Virginia Code 22.1-280.2, Section 3. Notice to the public and opportunity comment began December 6, 2021, and continued through January 7, 2022. The call for the public comment on the NPS website, the call for public input for the SRO program with the MOU attached ran on Facebook for consecutive Mondays, January 3, December 27, December 20, December 13, and December 6. It also ran on Twitter on consecutive Mondays, January 3, December 27, December 20, December 13, and December 6. It appeared in the January 2022 newsletter, and the most current version of the MOU between the City of the Norfolk School Board and the Norfolk Police Department is also posted for public access. Due to the pandemic and closures, school closures, this report covers services rendered from March 2021 through December 2021. For the 2021-2022 school year, SROs assigned to the middle schools and K-8, 3 through 8 settings were reassigned to patrol duties in September of 2021 as directed by the Chief of Police due to police personnel shortages. Once school principals completed the evaluations, forms were shared with each SRO's supervisors to review and input. Comments from the public also were included as part of the evaluation process. Information provided in the MOU, the SRO Evaluation Instrument, public comments, the Virginia Department of Educational Annual Report for Discipline, Crime, and Violence, the Norfolk Public Schools Synergy Discipline Report, the Schools Climate Survey, and the Annual SRO Evaluation Instrument, which was developed in agreement between the board and city designees, framed this evaluation report being submitted for approval. The SRO Evaluation Responses. And to begin, I'll share responses from the SRO Evaluation Instrument. The next six slides will highlight responses in categories that were evaluated. Dependability, in the area of dependability, 92.3% of the officers are punctual for school and scheduled events, while 84.6% of the officers can be counted on to perform duties with little or no supervision. Availability, in terms of availability, SROs are accessible to staff and students 84.6% of the time and respond to requests in a timely manner 92.3% of the time. Professionalism, as professionalism, 100% of the SROs present a professional appearance, and 74.9% of the SROs are self-motivated and willing to take on new tasks. 84.6% of the SROs demonstrate commitment to the school community. 92.3% of the SROs are courteous and tactful. SROs foster an environment of safety and cooperation conducive to learning 92.3% of the time. They also require students and staff to use their last name and rank when interacting with them 92.3% of the time. Communication, 100% of the time, SROs communicate effectively verbally and in writing, they communicate effectively 92.3% of the time. SROs demonstrate effective listening skills 100% of the time and meet the school administration 84.6% of the time. Judgment, SROs currently assess situations 92.3% of the time. They take a proactive role when appropriate 84.6% of the time. SROs coordinate with school administration and school security officers to prevent and minimize hazardous situations 92.3% of the time. Knowledge, 100% of SROs are knowledgeable about state laws and local ordinance, while 84.6% of the SROs are knowledgeable about school rules and discipline procedures. 100% of the SROs are knowledgeable about the criminal justice system, whereas 92.3% of SROs are knowledgeable about school and community resources. Performance, in reviewing the performance category, 84.6% of the SROs take appropriate action in regards to law enforcement. 100% of the SROs act as liaisons between the police command staff, school security officers, and school administration. 84%, 84.6% act as visible active law enforcement officers throughout the school building and on the entire campus. 100% of the SROs abide by school policies unless those policies conflict with the existing laws or police department policies or procedures. 100% of the SROs enforce city ordinance and state statutes by bringing violations before the appropriate court system. 100% of the SROs coordinate with the appropriate police department commanding officer or designee, school principal, school security, and managing and responding to any incidents or problems compromising the safety and security of students, staff, or the school building. Sixty-nine, excuse me, 69.3% of SROs maintain a daily log of all actions taken during the workday. Semester reports and all significant school-related incidents are provided at the end of the school year by 76.9% of the SROs. Performance and enforcing violations, vaping, 84.6% of the SROs enforce policy, assaults, 92.3%, weapons, 92.3%, sex offenses, 92.3%, vandalism, 84.6%, threats to do bodily harm, 92.3%, gang-related activity, 84.6%. Organization, all ratings in this area were 100%. Impact on school community was also a category. In this, in this area, 92.3% of principals support having an SRO assigned to their schools and have been informed about the role of the SRO. Even though one evaluation response indicated that 7.7% of the principals did not support the program, please be aware that this is one principal, and the context the principal used in responding was as a result of that principal taking into account that other schools may have a greater need than that school community where that principal is assigned. The principal does support the program but is willing to have the SRO assigned to a location that has a greater need. 77% of principals noted SROs have reduced bullying between students. 53.9% of the principals rated SROs as having reduced the number of fights between students. Principals at a rate of 84.7% expressed that SROs have increased student knowledge of what is, what is and what is not legal, and 100% of the principals expressed that SROs had knowledge of the legal system. 92.3% of the principals expressed that SROs have made it easier to maintain order in school. 84.6% of the principals indicated that SROs visibility in the school is adequate. 92.3% of the principals expressed the SRO's availability to staff and students is adequate. 86.4% of the principals rated the SRO's involvement with students as adequate. 92.3% of the principals expressed the SRO has reduced the fear of crime among teachers and staff. 86.4% of principals indicated the SRO has improved educator-law enforcement collaboration. Principal Comments. Comments from principals provided qualitative insight into the program. Thirteen principals provided comments. Overall comments indicated that principals support and appreciate having the SRO program in their buildings. Principals indicated the need and/or desire to have an SRO in school buildings and appreciation for the SRO program. In response where the principal disagreed with the statement, "I support having an SRO assigned to my school," this response was clarified with the explanation that the principal supported the program but would be willing to have the SRO assigned to a site where there was more need to have an SRO. There was an indication of a need to purposely develop and sustain partnerships with families and community stakeholders in order to nurture positive relationships. There was also a comment where a principal indicated a need for shared meaning regarding roles of the SROs. This need will be elaborated as I review next steps later in this presentation. There were public comments, and to ensure, to ensure community engagement during this process, the general public was invited to comment from December 6 through January 7, 2022. There were a total of 25 comments as of January 7. The SRO MOU post ran on Facebook on consecutive Mondays, January 3, December 27, December 20, December 13, and December 6. It also ran on Twitter on consecutive Mondays, January 3, December 27, December 20, December 13, and December 6. It appeared in the January 2022 newsletter, and it appears in the school board section of our website. Twenty new comments, 29 comments from the public indicated, 20 comments approved of the program, three out of the 20 approvals indicated the need to have SROs trained to meet social and emotional mental health needs of our students. Two comments disapproved of the SRO program and indicated they should be replaced with mental health resources and partnerships. Seven comments did not provide approval or nonapproval. Two requested virtual learning, and one talked about fights and bullying. Next Steps. Next steps are based on responses and information reviewed during the completion of the evaluation SRO program. Currently, the five, the high schools have SROs assigned to their buildings. Five officers have been placed in schools. Effective January 3, an SRO was assigned to Madison. The remainder of the middle schools and the designated K-8, 3 through 8 schools and three of the robe and supplemental SROs have not been assigned due to directives from the Norfolk Police Chief because personnel shortages in the police department. Even though all officers have not been assigned to the schools, the Norfolk Police Department has provided immediate and ongoing support to schools on all levels and have assigned officers from other departments within the Norfolk Police Department to complete threat assessments and investigations when needed. At this time, Norfolk Public Schools Administration is asking that the MOU be honored with all officers being placed in the schools as listed in the MOU. In performing their roles and responsibilities, SROs and school principals are partnering to carry out the SRO program with fidelity. Areas that require attention will be addressed through professional development for the SROs and school administrators. These areas include communicating expectations, developing clear and understanding of the roles, and consistently using reporting systems. And before I end the presentation and we begin questions and discussion, I want to be sure that it is clear that the SRO program is an asset in supporting our schools. We have a safety and security measures in place to foster, excuse me, to foster a safe and secure schools. And at this time, Dr. Gibson will share the measures that are incorporated into the daily operations of schools across the division. Dr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Good evening, School Board Chair Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Mr. Clanton, School Board Members and Dr. Birdsong. I want to highlight measures we take to ensure safe and secure learning environments in our schools. To begin, school sites complete safety audits annually to ensure buildings are safe for students and staff. Just as building safety inspections are completed, school administrators receive mandatory training such as PBIS trainings, discipline procedures, and updates, sexual harassment trainings, transgender procedures, anti-bullying, health mitigation, to name a few. And they return to their buildings and present these trainings to staff- And they return to their buildings and present these trainings to staff to ensure staff are ready to receive students when the school year begins. Administrators review the school crisis plans and provide practice drills and lockdowns that are stipulated in policies and procedures. They also have written procedures to follow when situations arise. The school crisis plan template provides instructions for administrators and to set expectations for student conduct and a safe learning environment. The MPS Code of Student Conduct is distributed and reviewed with students. Parents and students sign the code of conduct to acknowledge understanding of expectations. Under the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support and PBIS, schools follow the disciplinary level system as outlined in the Code of Student Conduct in addressing student behavior. Social-emotional learning is supported through PBIS, but it is also embedded into daily instruction. To support safety at our school sites, we have building entry procedures that every school should follow. School administrators ensure staff and students receive education on actions we all have to follow to support a safe and orderly learning environment. The education and the support of staff, students, and parents are essential in keeping social environments safe as well as our school environments. Our teachers, school counselors, social workers, psychologists, school nurses, and especially during the pandemic, our school nurses, school security officers, bus drivers, custodians, classified staff, administrators. Every school employee takes on the responsibility to be there for our students and to report information that may negatively impact the school community. We emphasize with students, staff, and families that if you see something, say something. We have provided anti-bullying, suicide prevention, and anti-harassment programs for the students. Just this week, Norfolk Public Schools was notified that we've received a security grant for over $200,000. This will support securing, improving our security systems throughout our schools. The health mitigation plan, along with working with the nurses to develop isolation room procedures, has been instrumental in guiding schools throughout the constantly evolving pandemic. In summary, measures and actions being implemented in schools across the division foster safe and secure learning environments. We will continue to work diligently in ensuring students have learning environments where they can focus on learning. Again, we thank you for your attention in reviewing the SRO program. I just wanted to take a moment to share with you the many practices that are in place based on MPS policy and your work so that you will know that the SRA, the SRO, is a component that supports the safety in our building. And we appreciate that. But at the same time, the work that we do following policies every day and setting expectations and building positive relationships for our students really help us maintain and support safe learning environments. At this time, I yield the floor for questions and discussion.
Can you talk about where we are with the MOU as far as staffing, the SRO staffing at our schools?
Yes, right now, on, when we came back from winter break, we had, we received the SRO for Madison. At the beginning of the school year, we did receive the five SROs for the five high schools. Our middle schools and our three roving officers have not been assigned as of today. The roving officers in certain communities, I think there are two of them, Mr. Mallory, and he can speak to you on how they help out around the city.
So currently, because of the shortage of the police department, but I can tell you, they have assisted us in many ways through the threats and things that have occurred following, you know, national incidents and things like that. They utilize the community officers from the communities. They use the detective divisions to respond to situations at schools. So we have that availability and we currently have one roving SRO that assists down here on what I consider the south side here.
There's 19 in the MOU.
Yes, ma'am.
Five at the high schools.
And six assigned, there are six assigned altogether, Madison and the five high schools. So we have six assigned, but there are 19 in the MOU. And Norfolk is requesting that the MOU be honored as it's written and not be amended.
Right. So, and then there's legislation that's being proposed to help incentivize the SRO, the use of the SRO program. Is that correct? Can you talk about that?
I'm just seeing very little.
Yes, Mr. Cloud will probably talk to you about that because that is correct.
There's a bill that has been put forward both to require school divisions to and to fund some sort of grants to SRO program.
It even, and I like the idea about it, but what, the more I think about it, the, it's not really about the shortage of money, right? That's not our issue, it's a shortage of bodies. It's a shortage of workforce that are people who are choosing to go into that profession.
Well, that and.
Right, right. Okay, so I think we're, there's a challenge here of moving forward and making sure that we are maintaining the SRO program, you know, to the, to the fullest extent that it's needed in our schools. Go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Dr. Birdsong, were you about to say?
I was just adjusting my microphone.
Oh, okay.
Well, actually, before, before I go to you, I do want to say I, I'm so appreciative of the work that the SROs do in our schools and, and the relationship that, building that they do. I know we always hear around this time of year, especially in the, you know, with the, we're entering budget process about having more social-emotional experts, certi, you know, certified experts in our schools instead of SROs, but I always say, well, we should have both. And I know, Lea Shukes, thank you for sharing that the SROs do have training even though they're not certified, but they, it's not that there's zero happening in our schools through the SRO program. They, they are equipped to the amount that they need to be. So, I mean, I, I, again, I think we need, we do need both in our schools and in our community. We need more people in, you know, mental health fields to be able, in pediatrics, helping our students and building those relationships and, and resources in our, you know, to have that bridge between the resources in our community and our schools. So, but I, I think that police officers who choose to work with children are kind of a special type of people. And I appreciate the, the work and the influence that they have on our students. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you for the presentation this evening. I think, you know, as, as I've expressed before, I feel that knowing the disproportionality that exists between those who are more, most likely to engage with an SRO in the school building, I'd like to see us put greater attention on the preventative measures that we can take. And with that, with the evaluation going forward, I like to see more evidence of the restorative practices that we're using and the other interventions that were taken before an SRO is engaged. As you said, in, there is, with the schools that don't currently have an SRO, you've been able to effectively have MPD respond to threats and incidents and you feel secure with how that's being handled right now, correct?
I'll respond to that. Okay. When we said that the MPD responded right away, we didn't mean to places where there were not SROs. We meant whenever there was a need, regardless of whether the school had an SRO or not. If there was a situation where the police needed to be notified based on MPS policy and following the law, when we called, they responded. So that was just in general, overall. It's not where if they, they don't have an SRO, but if they call, they'll go. That was regardless of if they have an SRO, if they have one or not.
And I understood that, but I, my point is, so whether there was one or not was the key piece, you know. So, so regardless of whether there's an SRO in the building or not, MPD responded swiftly with concerns per our policies.
Dr. Birdsong would like to.
I'm happy to address that. I know in conversations with building principals about SROs, especially at the secondary level, they have expressed concerns, especially at the middle school level. Those middle school principals have expressed concerns about not having an SRO assigned to their building. When they found that out at the beginning of the school year, they certainly expressed concerns and they continue to express concerns. I think, and I don't want to put words in Mr. Mallory's mouth, I think what he was trying to describe was that we do have a collaborative relationship whereby we can call them. But, you know, we have to be honest. If they are having difficulties meeting the demands in the streets, then certainly if there is something that takes priority that's occurring out in neighborhoods, they may not be able to respond as quickly as they would like to for a school situation. So they are being pulled in, in every direction. So at the end of the day, if you, and I think the, the survey reflects this, the secondary principals especially, you know, still want to advocate for having their SRO in their building because they, they do believe as it relates to law violations because we certainly don't have them intervene with discipline because that is the responsibility of the administration and not of the police department. They certainly express that they want them to be in their building. So based on numbers alone, it, it's just been unrealistic for them to have the SROs assigned to our schools in, in their opinions. But I, I believe, you know, they're going to have to collaborate with us one way or another because as you know, our schools are just a microcosm of, of the community. And so whatever is happening in the community, it often is, you know, things start to occur in the school buildings and they need support. So I don't want you to take away from this conversation that we're doing fine without them because I, I don't think that is, and I see you shaking your head, no.
That is not the case. If you look at the comments from the principals, you will see where the names are redacted, but the schools are not. And you can see, "I want my SRO, I miss my SRO, I appreciate getting my SRO back." So they have stated that in their qualitative comments.
Right, right, and I, I did take note of that, definitely. And I, I didn't take it as, you know, we're fine without it. I just, I'm trying to to get a better understanding of, and perhaps, you know, as you said, Dr. Birdsong, you know, they're there to respond to law violations in the school building. So as part of this evaluation report, I think it would be helpful to understand, and I know we could go and look it up, you know, how many law violations occurred that past year that we're looking at, the snapshot, you know, that's required to be in this evaluation. How many law violations, how many referrals to the just, uh, juvenile?
When you open up the introduction to the MOU and you listen to the introduction to the report tonight, you will see that the Discipline and Crime Violence Report that we give to the state, you'll see that the synergy discipline, the school climate surveys, those documents were used in working through the process of evaluating the SROs. However, those documents are not the focus of this particular report, so we have not included them. But we have taken them into account. And we think that when we look at our discipline and the things that we need to look at in our surveys, how people feel as well as what actually happens, we can honestly say to you that there is a need in our buildings to have our SROs there. That the SRO, the police officer is a part, is a microcosm of society. Everything that goes on in our schools, many times in terms of socialization and students working with or without each other or against each other is a result of what's rolled in from the community. And so we have to have all of those representatives in our community within our schools so that we can build those relationships, they can feel safe, they can know that they can go to someone confidentially, they can talk to someone. And we can build the kind of community within our school, which is a sanctuary, and hopefully it will flow out into our communities and better our communities as we engage our students in educating them.
Right, and, and so for me, there's a lot to unpack in what you just shared, which, you know, we've done before. I fully support adults in the building that can build relationships with students, programs for students to help de-escalate situations. And I did look, you know, and I looked through the report and I saw the pieces that you did take into account. And, but I think as a summary for us in the decision-making process, I think it's important to review that information because I think it's critical. Because when I hear or see a principal saying they build positive relationships in the building, I then look at the MOU that says that, you know, that, that is not the primary reason why an SRO is in the building. But it should be, you know, so it tells me from a, from a standpoint of, or of an individual board member who really, you know, wants to dismantle the school-to-prison pipeline and look at other more evidence-based programs and strategies that we know works to de-escalate situations in the school building, how can we put our resources behind those programs and then maybe transition the SRO program out? And I know there's a bill being introduced, there's going to be a lot of things being introduced in the General Assembly. But, you know, when we look at, for us, what's, we know through research works, I think we have to take that into account. So, you know, I, I personally, that's what I need to, to make that decision, is that information.
So, is there evidence the SRO program's not working?
No, there's no evidence that the program is not working. And as we began this about a year, a year ago, talking about the SRO program, to this date, we still have not received complaints of any sort regarding our SROs and how they interact within our communities.
Can I add to that? So the other piece is the survey, and I'm glad you mentioned, you mentioned the climate survey. You mentioned, you know, what's that?
He's next, I'm just saying, go ahead, I'm listening to you.
So, so we have time and time again, I think, asked for demographic data, like who's responding? So not, aside from the principals, we received public comment and, you know, I was two of them. And, because I wanted to see how many times a person could actually respond and there was a word limit and then what, an individual could respond multiple times to the survey. So, you know, the, the public comments were slim, I mean, not even. And we haven't had student input in here, which I think is also critically important. And the demographic data is critically important because SROs may provide a sense of safety for one subgroup while they provide the opposite for another subgroup. And I think that's something that we have to get beyond this because we've asked for that many times now to have that demographic data for respondents to surveys and, you know.
Ms. Basine, whenever you all request something, if it's the will of the board, we meet that obligation and we respond accordingly.
Also, as it relates to the children, I, I recall, if it not last year, there was, when information data were presented around student feedback around the SRO program, it was positive. So what data are you looking at that indicates that it's negative?
It, well, I didn't say it was, I'm just saying for this.
You did say that it wasn't, it wasn't positive, that it wasn't working for some groups like children.
I'm saying, what research shows is that when you dig down at the demographic data.
With the local research, we're talking about Norfolk Public Schools.
Right, but we don't know in that, in the data that we received from the climate survey, we didn't have demographic data.
But children overall have responded positively about their experiences with the SRO. I remember you asking the question specifically, and the data being provided to you specifically around that area.
Correct, but, but where those, who those students were, not individual, not to the specific identifying level, but whether they were white students, you know, or were they black students with disabilities, you know, we, we didn't have that information, is what I'm saying. So to align with what is nationally seen about the students that tend to find SROs provide a sense of safety where other subgroups find, have the opposite experience, I'm trying to see if, you know, what kind of experience we're providing. I think that's important. In any of the evaluation that we do is having that demographic data, especially if we're going to talk about anti-racism and equity. I think that's, it's especially, it's even more important to have that demographic data. I think that's, it's especially, it's even more important to have that demographic data.
It seems that it might come out, though, with, with the principals' comments, that they would be observing some discrepancies, and I didn't see that, but I'm just saying, like, there's other ways, other than if we didn't directly ask demographics of students in response to survey, that it probably, you know, it seems, where else could you decipher that? And if the principals aren't expressing that either.
I think in these various, you know, they're, they're using other forms of data to incorporate into this evaluation process. So, if the climate survey, for instance, is one of those pieces, then.
It's not in this report, right?
Well, the data isn't, but they've.
It is, it is deemed relevant data that we look at.
Right.
And when we put the SRO program together, when we first introduced it to you, at that time, we did share school climate data as we were working to build at the SRO program. As we come to evaluate the program, we do continue to look at that data, we continue to look at the other data that's listed, but that data is not the focus of the, of the report. The program and the performance of the SROs in the building is what we're looking at. And when you look in the, when you look in the evaluation, and the evaluation was developed, the instrument was developed based on the justice systems template, those things that the SROs mainly deal with in schools, such as vaping and drug offenses and gang-related activities, those performance indicators are listed in the evaluation where we're, where we're looking at their performance. So, this is a performance evaluation, it's not a discipline or a climate report.
Dr. Gibson, go ahead, Mr. Clayton.
Yeah, I'd just say two quick things here to ask, and I thought, Mr. Mallory, I heard it in your comments, did you also track complaints? Is that something I heard?
We have received no complaints of our SRO program.
Do you have a mechanism for tracking complaints?
No, but principals typically, if there are any issues in the schools, whether it's a SRO there or not, they contact me immediately. I spend probably the majority of my time, the last several months, in the middle schools because of the lack of an SRO there.
Definitely. And so, my, my second question to that one is, I know that it's been brought up about the many different ways, I guess, of the role. I mean, we have the official role for which the SROs serve within the schools, but one of those, those strategies is to build relationship and trust with those students that are in the, those school buildings, whether or not it's to deter, well, I think which is another thing, deter whether or not there's criminal activity, but to also to serve as a deterrent for anything that may escalate into potential illegal activity within the school buildings to provide safety for everyone that's there, correct?
Yes, sir, and how you do that is, is from relationships. I spent 14 years in law enforcement, working in some of the tougher communities in the city of Norfolk. The more and most important thing for my job was to build relationships in the community, and it's no different than building those relationships with the SROs in the public schools. In order to get information and to be a deterrent and to provide prevention within the schools, that SRO has to really build that relationship with the students, because the students are the ones with the information, and that's how we find out about things going on in the schools or in the community that may impact negatively on our school buildings.
And I think if we go back to December and the voices that we heard from those individuals in the community with a lot of the different things and a merit of things that have been going on, one of those things that I guess you can also see with the SROs and the lack that we're missing them in certain areas, you know, particularly in the middle schools, we have them in the high schools that are there, and I know that the administration's making the recommendation that we get the, the city to fulfill that. But I also want to make it clear to those who may be watching this, that the funding for the SRO program does not come out of the operational budget for the School Division, but it comes directly from the city of Norfolk.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so there is nothing prohibiting the School Division from adding additional resources to support restorative justice practices or other things that I've, I think I've brought up several times before, Ms. Basine, we've sat on some panels before, to support every activity to create a safe and secure learning environment for our students, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
That's where I get, was talking about you earlier, the comments about the either-or.
It's not, you know, we can, they all support each other. And last thing here, because you were a former police officer, right?
Yes, sir, in the city.
In the city, and so you are familiar with community policing, right?
Yes, sir.
And about how long have we been doing that here in Norfolk?
It's early, since the 90s.
Since the 90s.
Since the 90s.
So, when I hear about, and particularly from a former national role that I served in, hear about this particular thing in SROs and the data, the data that we had seen across the nation, Norfolk is a very different microcosm because of some of the things that we put in place back in the early 90s to include community policing.
Yes, sir, and I would say it started with the DARE program.
Yep.
In Norfolk schools.
And I think I shared my DARE program certificate.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yes.
And Dr. Martin, I do need to.
Friend on your wall.
I do need to let you know that the last page, the signature page, is going to be deleted because it's not supposed to be there, so we're going to remove that last page, and I do apologize for misspelling your name.
Okay.
And, and there's another text where there are some page numbers that need to be corrected, but other than that, once you all have reached your decision, we'll await your approval.
And our decision is to.
The decision will be for the board to formally vote, presumably at the next, at the business meeting, to either affirm the MOU as written, or if amendments are proposed, they would have to be negotiated with the city, or, you know, terminate the program.
Okay, so as proposed, meaning the full 19 SROs in our schools that we originally agreed to, okay, all right. All right, thank you, I'm sorry, Dr. Ralston has a question.
I want to make, make a quick point, it just sort of hit me, is that what Ms. Basine was talking about in terms of, in terms of restorative practice, I do think that, I understood the report was an evaluation, but I do think this whole restorative practices and proactive intervention is, is very critical in terms of what SROs do and some of the results that we really want to get, and the whole prisoner pipeline thing is very real in Norfolk Public Schools and a lot of schools across the country. And so, I do like the idea of somehow being able to capture some of that and some of the data to find out, like, are, are any of our students actually, how many are actually put in jail through SRO interactions? Are there any who get criminal records through SRO, you know, is that, is that, is that, is that available? Like, you could say, from our data, we say that 10 students from Norfolk Public Schools were actually, got criminal records through SRO interactions, and I'm not saying that that's the fault of SRO, but just look, seeing that data will give us an indication if it's really prevalent in our, you know, in our school system, in Norfolk Public Schools, because that is a big issue, you know, that, that we're all facing. And so, that was kind of why I was really in line with some of the things that she was saying, but not disputing the report, I, I understood their evaluation report. But as a side note, I felt it was very, it was very useful about restorative practices and, and the proactive part and some of the data about criminal activities as it relates to certain populations. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Dr. Ralston. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
First, I just have a point of clarity, the, the comments that we were receiving from the, on the school board's public comment questionnaire, that's something separate from the survey that, that you were referencing, correct? We, we receive, there's a survey that we had, and all it said was, tell us what you think about the SRO program, and then somebody could go in and just write a comment, and then we.
That was the public comment.
Right, that's the same public comments that you were referencing.
Yes, we, we pulled that information from, from those entries.
Yeah, so, from a, from a board perspective, we have had many conversations and also in our community advisory board policy discussion around trying to increase our ability to know who's responding to the surveys, you know, some of the presentations you all have given us in the past, you've shown us zip code breakdowns, so I just want to, one, offer the support for our surveys, trying to be more intentional of capturing who's responding to the, to the surveys, I think that's important for, for our analysis. Also want to offer support to what Ms. Basine and Dr. Ralston spoke of in terms of the restorative justice. That is something, I know when I was serving on the Police Chief Fair and Impartial Policing group that we had going, you know, Fairfax came down, Teens with a Purpose brought down, group from Richmond, and it's been a lot of work around restorative practices, and I think it is an opportunity for us in our MOU to be advocates for encouraging that restorative practices and training and so forth be clear in our, in our, in our program. And the last thing, I just want to encourage that we be a little more, I can't come up with a better word right now, careful about how we talk about our communities and what happens in the community and how it flows into the school system. There's no question that occurs, but our communities, neighborhoods, blocks in Norfolk are very diverse. You can walk from one block to another block and be very different, you can walk from one neighborhood to another, it can be very different. I think we have to be careful that, that we don't let our biases come into place where we may think that because a community or neighborhood is viewed as wealthy, that somehow there aren't issues there, and so I just wanted, one, as we have these conversations about the relationship between what happens in the community and what happens in the schools, what happens in the school and the community, for us to be a little more nuanced in our, in our discussion, and also be willing to, to look at some data if we can capture it, so that when we do see if there's a, an issue like that, we can, we can pinpoint it and do the best we can collectively to avoid any, any broad brushing. So, that's just my, that's not directed at you, that's just a collective thing that I think that as a community, we need to, we need to work at, because I just hear it all the time, oh, it's just something in the community has boiled over into the schools. Maybe, you know, maybe my daughter got in a fight with me this morning and had absolutely nothing to do with the community. Maybe, as we talk about often, you know, children come to school hungry, they, all kinds of issues, the whole COVID thing, so I just think to the extent that we can be more qualitative in our discussions around that, I think would be helpful for all of us.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation.
And I don't disagree with Mr. Jordan, just to clarify, I do believe the research does support that schools are microcosms of the community, regardless of whatever school it can be, it can be a school in Chesapeake, a school in Los Angeles, it, it doesn't matter. I'm, I'm not picking specific schools that I'm talking about, things coming to the neighborhood, I'm talking about all schools. I'm talking about all schools, period, and I think the research does support that.
Yeah.
Schools are microcosms of our community.
Yes, and what I'm saying to you is, the community, or our communities, is, is very diverse, so if we just say the schools are a microcosm of the community, then what are we saying? Are we saying microcosm of the city of Norfolk? Are we saying microcosm of the attendance zone? I mean, so, I'm not disputing the research, because I spent a lot of time in it. I'm saying when we say things like "the community," I think we can be more qualitative or be more, provide more clarity about what we're saying, because when you use the word, when one uses the word "community," it can mean different things to, to different folks, and, and that's why, why I raised that.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Jordan, and thank you, Dr. Gibson and Mr. Mallory for the presentation. Okay, up next, we have the second reading of policy, employee leave policy, GCBZ. Le, Dr. Paul.
Good evening.
Any updates on this policy?
I'm, I'm here to say, hopefully this is my quickest presentation of the board. We have received no comments since the last set of edits that were recommended by the community, and so this is the second reading, hopefully for vote next week at the business meeting with the final passage of GCBZ, but there have been no additional comments.
I do have a question about, there's a comment here from L. McIntyre, and it looks like it was cut off. So, if you're going to change the section maternity leave to maternity and paternity.
Oh, that was, and that was a comment prior, those edits were made in this, this one, so we, there was a, when we changed the section to maternity and paternity, there were still a paternity section in there, or maternity section in there, rather, so we just deleted that section.
Just editing here.
Correct.
All right, any questions or comments? So, this will be on the agenda at the work session for us to vote on.
It should be on the business.
I'm sorry, what did I just say? Sorry, business meeting.
Yes, ma'am. And I do stand ready to read the entire policy, if you would like.
No, thank you.
We've read it. The original, the red line, the revised.
Thank you very much.
All versions, thank you, Dr. Paul. All right, well, thank you, everyone. So, with that, meeting's adjourned.